Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now in session for this regular meeting for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If you would, let's all please rise for a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Ward, will you lead us in prayer today, please?
Well, we come to you today as we conduct our county's business. We pray that you will guide our decisions and everything that we do today. We appreciate all the people that are here with us today. We also appreciate all of our county staff, all of our workers, and everyone that keeps this county running, Lord Jesus. We pray for their safety every day, and we pray for your safety in this nasty weather for everybody's travels, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first today will be approval of minutes from our special meeting on three eight, our regular meeting from March the first, and our regular meeting from February fifteenth.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion?
We doing all of them at once?
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next would be payment of county bills.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Ward to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Up next, Mr. Allen Pierce, Special Project Coordinator.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just have a brief comment, then Ms. Griffin has something on her report that relates to what I'm talking about. So I just need to inform the board that the electronic transfer of some five million dollars from the Gulf Council, which is the federal agency that has money from the BP oil bill, so from five million dollars from the Gulf Council, to the Gulf Consortium, of which Franklin County is a part, to Leon County, who was a fiscal agent for the consortium. That five million dollar transfer should happen this week, and then Leon County will give it to Franklin County. We will then in turn send it to the Corps of Engineers with some other, another million dollars. When that is completed, then the Corps of Engineers will start the process of getting the task order for Mike Hook to do the dredging. So we are, once we send the money to them, which should happen next Monday or Tuesday, depending on when we get our money, then it's thirty to forty-five days and they'll start dredging. So, but I, that's my introduction, and Ms. Griffin has a longer statement.
Okay, while Allen is with us, I'd like to go ahead and do, actually, item D on my report. On Wednesday, March ninth, Chairman Jones, Allen, and I participated in a conference call with the Corps of Engineers and representatives of the Gulf Consortium. The purpose of the call was to finalize the payment of funds to the Corps for the dredging of the East Point and Two Mile channels. The Corps explained that they are now ready to move forward with dredging, but they cannot move forward with a task order to Mike Hooks Incorporated, the dredge contractor, until the Corps has received all of the funds from the county. Representatives of the consortium believe that the county will have the five million dollars of consortium funds to pay the Corps later this week, as Mr. Pierce said. The board may recall that Mr. Pierce advised the board at the last meeting that the Corps had sent a letter informing the board that they had revised the dredging costs upwards, and the latest cost estimate for the project is now six million dollars. The county has asked the Gulf Consortium for the additional funds, and the consortium staff believes that a grant amendment will be approved, but not received in the timeframe requested for payment by the Corps. In order to avoid any further delay in formulating a task order between the Corps and the dredge contractor, I recommend the board authorize a manual check be cut for the six million dollars upon receipt of the five million dollars in consortium funds, and for the county to seek interim short-term financing to cover the amount of the additional one million dollars in dredge costs while the grant amendment moves through the approval process with the Gulf Consortium. It is our understanding that once the Corps receives the funds, they will then process the task order. Dredging should start within thirty days of the task order being issued. Board action to authorize the Clerk's Finance Office to cut a manual check up to the six million dollars made payable to the Army Corps of Engineers upon receipt of the five million dollars in consortium funds, and for county staff to seek interim short-term financing for the one million dollar project amendment.
We'll move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockland.
Second with comment.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Please proceed with your comment, Commissioner.
Allen, I appreciate your work on this. I know it's frustrating for you, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a Commissioner. It's frustrating for me as well, and I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the others. You know, they've been leading us along for a long time now. Now they went to five million, now they want another million. Now they're saying they have thirty days after, or thirty days after to get the task order to dredge. We're coming on hurricane season now. They said last year they didn't do it because of hurricane season. I'm tired of the excuses, and I know I'm not fussing at you, but we got to get this done. For our community, for charter fishermen, for our people that work on the water. We've got to get it done. I don't know why they keep giving us the runaround. I know that it's kind of beyond our power, but I don't know what we need to do to make sure that this actually does happen, and they don't come back next time and say, "We need another million." What's to stop them from that?
Well, there's no dissolves for that. I will say, my advice to the board is that there never be a next time with the Corps of Engineers. That the board look at other mechanisms to get these channels dredged on a more regular basis, so we don't have these huge, one, twenty-year, twenty-five-year timeline, time gaps, and we don't have five to six million dollars in lump funds. If there's other ways to do this, and I, and I, we will need to talk to consultants on this outside of my expertise, to do this dredging on a regular, you know, more inter, interval, a regular interval every couple of years, the cost wouldn't be so high, and then we would have control of the timeline. On the case of East Point, we have a dredge disposal area that's being created. So one of the problems has been getting the state of Florida to recognize and to agree of the new disposal area. Well, that's now been done. So I believe that that disposal area, depending on how much we put in there, can handle more spill in future years. I know that's the case of the Two Mile Channel, because the Two Mile Channel is an upland disposal area. The county owns that, controls that. So I believe that as soon as this thing's over, you know, maybe talk to Mike Hook Incorporated directly, who's a dredging contractor, or find out who the other core dredging contractors are. Talk to them and see what sort of opportunities we have to get a direct contract with them and not go through the Corps, because your exact recommendation has been very frustrating. You know, all I have is a verbal assurance that they tried to go up on the price this time, and we backed them back down. But, you know, I don't know. I mean, we're hostage to the Corps as long as they are controlling the contract.
Is there any way we can make it a navigable channel? Because, I mean, people navigate our channels all the time. If it's navigable per the state of Florida, is there, is that a reasoning as to why, how they can maybe start dredging it every once, couple of years, or every, however many years, so it doesn't get this bad again?
Yeah, I don't know. Like with the example of the Intercoastal Waterway, which is part of the maintenance dredging schedule of the Corps of Engineers, they do that every couple of years, and they do that with their funds. In the case of the Two Mile Channel, the East Point Channel, both those are defined by the Corps of Engineers to be local projects. And they only do local projects when Congress allocates money for those local projects. And that's the challenge for us, to get our Congress representative, our federal representative, to get the Corps, to get somebody to switch those two local channels into core maintenance channels. As long as they're defined as local channels, even though they're part of the navigation system, they're still local channels, and the Corps won't dredge them unless Congress appropriates money specifically for those channels. And that's been the battle. So only twice in my thirty-two years, only twice in thirty-two years has the Corps appropriated money for those channels. And that's, or Congress, that's how, that's how difficult it is to get these line items in there. So I would say we start working with the Corps and our Congressman early, because the Corps will do whatever the Congress tells them to do, sort of, is to get Congress to allocate or designate these two channels as part of the navigation system maintained by the Corps. Now, how hard that is, I don't know, but that's where I would start. And I want to start negotiating with the dredging contractors who are familiar with the process, and see if we can get an understanding from them. Can we negotiate directly with them and just bypass the Corps? The risk with bypassing the Corps is that, you know, if the Congress appropriates money and we don't use the Corps, guess what? We won't ever get the congressional money, because I can promise you, the Corps is never going to give us their money. They'll take our money, but it doesn't ever go the other way. So we will be on our own if we get, start negotiating directly with the contractors. But, you know, what's the risk? We wait every twenty-five years for a project, or we do it a little more regularly under our control? I don't know.
Yes, sir.
They still will take it, they take it double.
Yes, sir.
They taking it this time, this thing went back to Katrina.
Yep, that first five million went to Katrina.
Yeah, they had allocated that.
Congressman Boyd, we had five million dollars, or three million dollars, we got into Congressman Boyd, and Katrina came through, and because of the damage and the overwhelming public need in Louisiana, all the funds went there, and then they, so Congress spent, I mean, the Corps spent it with congressional acknowledgement. Congress never put it back in till twenty years later, after Katrina, they finally reallocated some money for us. So, yeah. Commissioner Lockland, it's a very tough situation. And I don't know if we do it on a regular basis, how much it would cost. It certainly wouldn't be millions. And really, the challenge is, will our disposal areas have the capacity to keep putting things in there? Will DEP give us a permit? I know in Two Mile, that's the case, because we own that, it's an uplands. We're just doing it at East Point, and so we sort of need to see how that goes. But if it goes positively, and somehow we can continue to renew that disposal area, then yes, that challenge is much less difficult, because now we have disposal areas that are available to us.
They ripping us off, because I don't think it cost no million dollars to pump Two Mile up to that disposal area. A million dollars?
Commissioner, theoretically, each channel is three million.
Yes, you're right.
Well, I mean, you know, so they got this money appropriated by Congress three or four years ago. I think it was three million dollars. They spent two million dollars in in-house administrative design costs, so they only had a million dollars contributed to the dredging. You know, I mean, the Corps is a huge federal agency, and I don't tell you.
Thank you, Allen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good morning. One of the meritous points about what we're about to vote on is the fact that we're considering, and we are considering, the short-term financing of a million dollars. It's just another way of saying that we here in Franklin County care about our waterways, and we're willing to finance that little gap that has occurred here to get this thing facilitated and get it moved. And it particularly merits us to be thinking about this because of our bay in general having been shut down. This is another navigable waterway for some of our workers and some of our seafood industry.
Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Is that it for you, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, up next is public comments. Ms. Melissa Spear. If you would, please approach the podium, say your name for the record. You have three minutes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Spear. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Franklin County resident in Los Briesas, and for the record, I'm also a licensed real estate broker in Florida. I'm here today with some of my neighbors to express our concern about the imminent and ongoing stormwater issue in Los Briesas. This last weekend, the five inches or six inches of rain that we got quickly developed into twelve inches of rain in the cul-de-sac in the neighborhood. About eight parcels were more than fifty percent underwater. Our fire hydrants were completely submerged. The lift station for the sewer in the neighborhood was nearly submerged. So it is an ongoing issue, very imminent. As you mentioned earlier, hurricane season is coming, and we, you know, after five or six days of rain like that, we'll all be completely underwater. From my previous conversations with some of you all regarding this issue, it sounds like we've identified, or maybe the county has identified, a parcel of land on South Bay Shore Drive that might be used as a possible drainage easement. I've noticed that that parcel has recently come for sale on the market, so that might be one way that we could rectify the issue. Another issue to consider is that the county continues to issue building permits in the neighborhood, and the clearcutting and land development is further exacerbating the problem. So we're really here to beg for some assistance soon, as soon as we can. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Melissa. I will, I will tell you, just to address that, we have, as far as I remember, reached out to all the adjacent property owners that could help alleviate the water issue going toward the bay, and it's in my recollection that none of them responded to the certified letter. So, just so you know, we have reached out to them. All right? And Michael, this is also a public comment.
It is. Dr. McMillan, chief, on the line, ready to address the board.
All right, please do that now.
All right, Dr. McMillan, if you would unmute your device. You have, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the Board of County Commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Jacqueline McMillan. I'm an assistant professor in the Social Department at the A and M University. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me an opportunity to speak during your Board of County Commissioners meeting today.
You're welcome.
I wanted to share with you today is that I'm working with FAMU's Cooperative Extension Office, who has awarded the Rota grant, and this is the Rural Opioid Technical Assistance Grant Program, and it focuses on providing teaching and technical assistance to our rural Florida counties with opioid issues affecting these communities. It's expected that grantees such as the Cooperative Extension Office at FAMU will facilitate identifying model programs and develop materials that you can use for prevention, treatment, and recovery activities in your county for opioid use disorder, and ensure that the trainings are high quality. We get trained in utilizing opioid harm reduction strategies. And the materials include things like webinars, workshops for policymakers, for educators, law enforcement, faith-based leaders, and any other community stakeholders who are interested in opioid use in your communities. We also have incentives allotted for education, and we have harm reduction kits that law enforcement and active community groups can work towards eliminating opioid misuse and drug overdoses in your community. So I would love to come back to a more comprehensive presentation specific to the needs of Franklin County, because that's what we do. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Roan, I'm supposing they'll be reaching out to you to try to set up a time for that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'll do. I'll contact Dr. McMillan and see if we can set up a date that she can appear before the Board of County Commissioners with a full presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
I'll be talking to you soon, Dr. McMillan.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay.
All right, up next is, we have some recognitions this morning. Mr. John Solomon, National Volunteer Week proclamation.
Yes, sir, John Solomon. Here, I have a proclamation that I'd like to present to the Candid Commission for your approval. Michael, you want me to read it?
Yes.
I got a copy this year. I remember this year. National Volunteer Week, April seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world, and whereas individuals and communities are at the center of social change discovering the power to make a difference, and whereas during the week of April seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, all of the nation volunteers will be recognized for their commitment to service, and whereas the giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient, and whereas our country's volunteer force of sixty-three million is a great treasure, and whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and productive community, and whereas a volunteer saves on national average twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents an hour for the organization it volunteers for, and whereas in Florida, a volunteer saves organization it volunteers for an average of twenty-six dollars and thirty-two cents, whereas volunteers give themselves for no other reason but to make our community better. Now therefore, you, the Franklin County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, National Volunteer Week in Franklin County, and also urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in Franklin County, and also we urge others to recognize those who serve by tirelessly sharing their time and talent with those in need.
Thank you, sir. Attorney General, we would ratify this by a vote, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Pleasure, the board. All right. Pleasure, the board.
Motion moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Mr. Chairman, I remind you that your planning of zoning board, a number of your other boards are also volunteers, so that goes way beyond and including to what John is talking about.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, John.
All right. Up next, Clerk Michelle Maxwell.
Good morning.
Finance Professionals Week, correct?
Good morning. Michelle Maxwell, Clerk of Court, I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the Florida Government Finance Officers Association is a professional association founded in 1937 and serves more than 3,300 professionals from state, county, and city governments, school districts, colleges, and universities, special districts, and private firms. And whereas FGFOA is dedicated to being your professional resource by providing opportunities through education, networking, leadership, and information. And whereas this inaugural Government Finance Professionals Week, sponsored by FGFOA and all of its member governmental organizations, is a week-long series of activities aimed at recognizing government finance professionals and the vital services that they provide to our state and our community. And whereas during this week, government finance professionals throughout the state of Florida will be acknowledged for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. Now therefore, I, Michelle Maxwell, Franklin County Clerk of Court, on behalf of Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Bolt, Commissioner Lockley, Commissioner Parrish, and Commissioner Ward, do hereby proclaim March 14th through the 18th, 2022, as Government Finance Professionals Week in the County of Franklin, and extend our appreciation to all government finance professionals throughout the state and here in the County of Franklin for their hard work, dedication, and leadership. And I would also like to take this time to recognize my finance department, if you don't mind standing. I have Linda Phillips, my finance director, Lauren Liberto, she is my finance clerk. I have Danny Gay, he's not able to be here today, he's my assistant finance director, and Andrea Register, she is a finance clerk as well. Thank you all for your hard work, your dedication, not only what you do for my office, but for our county. So thank you.
I believe we also have Mr. Rick Watson here, tax collector.
Good morning. Commissioners, Rick Watson, Franklin County Tax Collector. I'd like to especially recognize the finance people in my office. Marzetta Davis is the finance director, and Shawna Martina is the property tax administrator. These are the people that keep the wagon in the road and keep it moving. It is very important for us to be accurate and prompt and deliver good customer service. And I think our, our team values them. I think it's wonderful for the county to recognize the contribution that they make, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Rhonda Skipper?
Good morning, Commissioners and Madam Clerk. I have the honor of introducing my finance officer, Ms. Megan Shaver, I almost called you Dempsey. I've had the pleasure of knowing her her whole life, and I've thrown many challenges at her since she came on board, and she's never complained, at least not to me. But she does an outstanding job, and she is definitely an asset to my office. Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Sheriff Smith?
Good morning, Commissioners, and save the best for last. But anyway, Ginger has been our CFO since I took over the sheriff's office, going on five and a half years now, and just like, I want to echo what everybody else said, we couldn't do it without our CFO, all the things they do, not only keeping track of the money, but everybody's leave time and a lot of other things that help the organization run smoothly and efficiently, and provide the wonderful service that we're able to, to the county. So Ginger, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, not to, I'll do the share because he has the badge and the gun, but truly to save the best for last, and since, I'll tell you what, since they've been friends longer than I have with them, I'll let Alan Pears tell you about Aaron Griffith.
Well, I can say a lot of things, but I won't.
I mean about work.
No, Aaron, as you know, Ms. Griffith came over from the clerk's office, and she has been unbelievable in her job. She has not yet told you all the grants that she has written and gotten this year as the legislative action, but this list is lengthy, and I want to say, maybe 100%? Did you get any failure this year? I don't think so.
Actually, no.
Gee whiz, no failure. So she set a very high bar for herself, and she's committed for all the activities she does, managing the grants, assisting Michael and myself in keeping all these things straight, because I, I had, I was, in my career with you all, I was pretty good at the vision and the long-range goals and the big picture. I wasn't so good with the little details, and either I had to have someone behind me, Mark Harrington, Aaron Griffith, someone who says, I don't know about that, is that going to work? And so by, between the two of us, we managed to stay out of jail so far, but we've been very successful in getting money for the county and the public, and the benefits, the improvements, and Aaron's done a great job, and again, I want to commend her for just in one year, being diligent and learning the new tasks and the new, the new role she has for the county, as well as being successful in this grant application process, because it takes a lot of time and it's just perseverance to continue to contact people and say, is this the way to do it? Is this what's happening? It's that personal contact that you develop, and she's done a great job in one year of making those contacts and keeping the county moving forward with a number of programs that you all and the public will see in the next 12 months. We're waiting for the, for the legislature to finish, actually, for the governor to finish the budget authorization, then we can announce all these things, you know, publicly because there's always a chance the governor might veto things. But at this time, the legislature's funded everything we've requested, and that's a great step forward for the county, and you're going to see the benefits over the next 12 months. And I, it all goes to Aaron and the people who have helped her. But she had, she had to ask the right questions, and she was the leadership. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you did get that they haven't been to jail yet.
I was trying not to highlight that, but yes, I did catch it.
I want to make sure, sir.
I did catch that.
I'm sure Aaron will never get there. I can't wait.
Well, thank you all for everything you do. It makes a difference for every one of us, whether we know it or acknowledge it. It makes our life better, so thank you. All right. Up next, Mr. Howard, Neighbor Superintendent of Roads and Bridges.
Good morning, Commissioners. How y'all doing?
Morning, Howard. We're doing good.
I got new action items this morning, but we are, we still going to fix the shoulders of the road, picking up litter, putting in cover, cleaning pipes. We did get a lot of rain the weekend, which most of it didn't run off. I was in Las Briesas yesterday, which is about all our water was gone.
Okay.
So I know a lot of people ain't got no cover of pipes, especially on the north side, a lot of houses have been built in there, and they also got concrete driveway, but they did too. So on the south side, there's some ditches are covered. We can, you know, clean a few of them ditches out, maybe a couple of them pipes, took that out while I go to the bay.
Well, I, I thank you for working on what you have worked on, Howard, and when we get through with the meeting, I'll probably try to call you later today so we can discuss everything you're, you're mentioning, so I know for sure where it's at, and do our best to help them alleviate minus their neighbors giving them an easement to actually move the water, so we can do what we can do, and I do appreciate that.
And it's unfortunate, Commissioner, while Howard was talking, I don't think they heard him mention it, then they left the meeting.
Probably not.
So we'll have to contact them a little.
Probably not, but that's, that's fine. Anyone have any questions or concerns for Mr. Neighbor's, one of his in attendance with us today?
I do have an item that will cover Howard, it'll cover Fonda, but if we go to page nine, Commissioners, to the very bottom, starting item C. The Florida Department of Corrections has sent a new inter-agency public works agreement for the use of, of community work squads, squads. I forwarded the agreements to your departments for their review and comments, and Fonda, I apologize, I think I might have missed you when I sent that email, I'm not sure, but I sent it yesterday. I recommend, I recommend that each board member and Attorney Schuler review these agreements as there have been questions and discussions recently about work squad availability, especially the number of inmates and the frequency in which type of, in which each department receives a squad. After these reviews and comments, we can contact FDOC to discuss any possible changes to the agreements, and then proceed with signing. So basically, in a nutshell, I, I think because of all the discussion for the last couple of years about the availability of the squads, you know, we want to make sure that we have the wording as much as it benefits us as possible. I do hear Attorney Schuler's voice in my head saying, if you want the state's money and you want their services, you pretty much don't have much of a choice, but, you know, let's see what we can work out here. I know Howard, the road department has sent a couple of changes they would, they would like done. There was no contract for mosquito control, we need to talk to them about that. DeWitt, Ms. Bolus told me, he doesn't understand how we got to not having a contract for them. We used to have one, then it went under Parks and Rec, and it's what, he thinks we need to go back to having a separate contract for mosquito control, for work squads. So I guess what I'm asking, is there anything else the board wants me to start to, to consider as we discuss this, you guys review these contracts?
Can you get me a copy of it, please?
I will. I promise you, I will.
I'm, I'm good with this discussing in the future meeting.
Okay. But if you have any comment, I'd like to have it all incorporated so it can be part of a report, so that I present that, then from there, we move on with the discussions rather than throwing ideas out, you know, for the first time at a meeting. So if you contact me before the next meeting, kind of summarize that in a report, and we'll move forward from there. Okay.
Sounds good.
And that applies to you, Howard, applies to Fonda, and Howard, would you pass this on to DeWitt, too, please, for mosquito control?
Yes, sir, I will. And that one where I changed, Michael, was, we got six crews now instead of five, it used to be five and now it's six. So I mean, they had 20 inmates, and I was asking, but they got 24.
Okay. I got those notes. Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. Does that conclude that, Michael?
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
All right. Anything else while Mr. Howard's here?
I don't, sir.
Okay. Howard, thank you for being here with us today, and make sure you tell the crew we said thank you for everything they're doing on our behalf, for the residents. Up next, Mr. Fonda Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
No action item this morning. What I would like for you all to know is that currently we are not taking any sludge at the landfill from the cities, also East Point Water and Sewer, due to the fact that we are over capacity right now. Some of you all may have received some calls, wanting to know why. The last inspection we had, DEP told us we was over capacity. I think we, we were supposed to be taking around 300 cubic yards, and we was right there at it. Later on, come to find out that we are not supposed to be taking sludge. They are doing some research on it. Our, our permit at once allowed us to take it. Somewhere down the line, that, that the wording was taken out of the permit, and what I was thinking is, and talking with DEP, is that we removed that due to testing, and the testing what requires or allow us to issue the compost that was made from the slug to the public. We did not want to take that risk at the time, and we thought that we would just do away with the word, but it still would allow us to take the slug. But today, DEP is saying, no, it has to be in your permit. The permit is due at this time for five more years, it's about to expire the end of this month, so we are working on that, trying to put that wording back in where we can, accept the sludge to help the cities have someone to dispose of it. Just want to let you all know.
Okay, so I got a question, Mr. Davis. If we're working on a permit that's going to expire at the end of this month, does it need to be approved, or Attorney Schuler, can we retroactively approve that permit?
I don't think we approved the permit.
Oh, it has nothing to do with us?
That's right. That's DEP.
Okay.
Yes.
That's cool. Just wanted to clarify and make sure what we're doing.
Yes. Yes, I meant, they, they, when they come to inspect us, I guess the inspector felt like we was doing okay. They told us we was just at, at our capacity, we need to ease up. With all the rainfall and between, between the time that it breaks down to allow us to use the compost on the side slopes of the landfill to keep the erosion down, it had not, when they came to inspect, so we took a little bit more, just trying to help out, and we got a big inspection coming up next week. They coming down, because again, it's, it's time for our permit to be renewed.
Okay.
So they coming up to, to inspect us.
Okay.
All right. Just want to let you all know, just in case some calls come in about the slug.
Sounds good. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
The key word that Fonda used this morning was overcapacity, and this just reminds me again of the importance that we need to be thinking long-term about expanding our landfill and our options, and, and I've heard this before, and I think it's important that we begin to move down that pathway promptly, to begin thinking about increasing our landfill, just because our county is growing in so many different ways.
Any other concerns this morning, Commissioners?
Yeah, Commissioner, good point. We are, we have a Dewberry that's working with us, we're moving towards that, what we want to get the permit for the next five years in place, and then we will move towards what you're talking about.
Great, good. Thank you.
Yeah, I might add, just because I know this from all the history, I mean, you have a, the board and the public have a major cost coming up at some point because you are running out of space in that landfill. I mean, a major cost, millions of dollars.
We are coming to a fourth in the road, just to.
Just so be aware.
Yeah, once we get the permit, we'll, we'll try to, try to work on some future concepts of, you know, where exactly we're heading with the future.
Mr. Davis, please know that we thank you. Make sure your crew knows that we thank them for everything they do on behalf of our residents.
We do. Also, one other thing, I would like to just mention Melissa West, who's not directly in finance, but she do handle transactions, statements, and the money at the scale house, so I'd just like to, for the record, just recognize her also. Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we should do the same for Virginia at the road department. She really does, pretty much the same thing, you know?
Yes, she does.
I mean, her hands are, come across the body, where her hands are in everything, basically, as the operation moves forward.
She helps our road department and mosquito.
And mosquito control, yes.
Mm-hmm. All right. Up next, Emergency Management Director, Ms. Pam Burnell.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, we have one action item. We're asking for board approval and signing of the MOU with Franklin County and the Franklin County School Board. This is the same MOU as last year and for several years. It's for the means of transporting our transportation disadvantage out of the county during an evacuation.
Okay. Pleasure, the board.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Um, the other thing this morning, I know that the special meeting, we voted that the burn ban would either carry on today or we would rescind it. My recommendation is to rescind it. We're looking at rain today, rain tomorrow, then possibly clear on Thursday, and then rain through the weekend.
Attorney Schuler, I have a question. Didn't that burn ban we enacted actually lapse at nine o'clock this morning?
Yes, so there's, there's no need to take any action to rescind it. It did expire by its own terms at 9:00 AM, subject to board's potential to renew it.
Right, okay. All right. Anything else, Ms. Pam?
Yes, sir. I would like to recognize Jeanne Daniels. She handles our finance part of our grants, working with Aaron to keep up to make sure that we don't go over our state grant budget money and our fed grant budget money and our county.
Well, good. Thank you. Well, good. Thank you. And thank you, Jeanne, for that. Anything else, Ms. Pam?
Uh, no, so that's it.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns for Ms. Burnell while she's here? Thank you all for everything you do. We appreciate you. All right, up next, extension office director, Mr. Eric Lobstrand.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I don't have any action items for you, but I do have one person, my right-hand person in the extension office that handles our finances on both the university side and county side and could not do that job without her, and that is Ms. Michelle Huber. She's doing an excellent job on, in that role.
Well, that's great. Thank you for that acknowledgement, sir, for Ms. Huber. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Eric while he's here in attendance today? Mr. Eric, thank you for everything you guys are doing.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Up next, ship administrator, Ms. Lori Switzer Mills.
Hey Lori, would you unmute? You're good to go.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I just have one item today on the hurricane housing recovery fund. We advertised the bids for the final bid package for one, one final mobile home replacement at 354 25th Avenue. The bid opening was March the ninth. There were two bidders. Ironwood Mobile Homes of Perry and Clayton Homes. Ironwood Mobile Homes of Perry won the bid. The bids were as follows. Ironwood bid, $107,015.60. Clayton Home bid was $114,300. So this is for a two-bedroom, two-bath, basic, single-wide mobile home. The home's being placed on the community land trust lot with a land trust lease. The bid includes water and sewer tap fees and a light pole. It's a wooded lot. So we have partnered with Rose Griffin with Capital Area Community Action, who is taking care of the lot clearing for us. So the action item, I am requesting a motion to go over the maximum award amount of $86,000 for this applicant and to award the bid for 354 25th Avenue to Ironwood Mobile Homes in the amount of $107,015.60.
Before we have a motion, Ms. Lori, could you please state your name for the record?
Lori Switzer Mills.
Thank you. All right, pleasure to the board.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pierce.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Please proceed, Commissioner.
Oh. Ms. Wang, do that include sewage hook-up, water and sewer?
Yes, it does include that.
Okay.
Ms. Lori, I also have a question.
This was... Uh-huh.
It, it says here in your report that this home is being placed on a lot that's owned by the county land trust.
Yes, sir.
As such, are they the ones going to own this mobile home or is the person that we're providing it for going to own it?
No, the person will own it. We'll have a 10-year lien on it, just like the rest of them.
But is the...
We actually got the lease from Florida Housing.
But is the lien attached to the property or just the mobile home itself?
Uh, the, the, um, the land is owned by the land trust with, with a, as long as, you know, they want to be there. So the mobile home is owned, will be owned by the homeowners.
The lien is on the mobile home.
Yeah, to answer your question, the lien is on the mobile home, yeah, not, not on the property. Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
Okay.
I guess if they, something happens, it could be moved off that property and, yeah, put somewhere.
Correct.
It's not a land trust issue. I'm just wanting to know where the lien is.
Yes.
That's all I ask. Okay.
Right.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
Just to clarify for the board's understanding, when you say a 10-year land lease between the property owner and the landowner, that is for a fixed amount of rent that does not increase over a 10-year term? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
And it's affordable for the homeowners.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Lockley.
I get, look at you, I, oh, well, I might, so that mean they won't have to pay no trailer note, but they have to pay the land trust for rent?
Yes, sir. I haven't seen the lease. I don't know the amount of the rent, but the, the board, essentially, the public's paying for the trailer.
I think it's 300 a month.
How much?
I think it's 300.
Okay, so 300 a month for a fixed 10-year.
Which includes the water. I, I want to say it includes the water. I might be wrong.
If it includes the water, that's a heck of a deal in the city of Appalachia, Attorney Schuler.
It includes water and sewer.
What are you there for that?
But anyway, we digress. Any other questions, commissioners, before we take any action?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. All minds clear? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Lori, before you go, Mr. Chairman, if I may, hold on. Can we go to my report, item A on page, the very bottom of page A? At your last meeting, I informed the board that Ms. Lori Switzer Mills is currently on the line. The county ship administrator will not renew the ship administrative agreement that takes effect on July 1, 2022. There was a discussion regarding advertising for requests for qualifications versus requesting quotes from Appalachia Regional Planning Council, known as ARPC, and Community Action Agency. Both agencies with ship and housing program experience to provide the ship administrative services to the county. Most counties, especially those in our region and similar size, either have county staff member or an agency like ARPC or Community Action providing administrative services. In addition, the 10% administrative fee, which is currently $35,000 per year, will not equal to a reasonable salary for qualified individual after all office and business expenses are deducted. Based on that information, I recommend that we request quotes from ARPC and Community Action Agency for ship administrative services. So I, I checked around like I said I would. I talked to Lori. She, she also double-checked me in the same way. The, the issue is, commissioners, if we put out a RFQ, someone have to be qualified in order to do the ship program. Then by the time they deduct the office expenses and some other expenses, they have to find a location or we won't be available for, for a while. That doesn't leave much money per year. And also keep in mind, if the state, from budget year to budget year, does not fund the ship program, that person still has to work and still has to monitor the open files without getting any money in that current year, any administrative money. And that...
Correct.
That led me to where I am in recommending we deal with an agency that can basically add this to services that they already provide and they can take the hit when there's no ship funds, administrative ship funds available. That's my thinking and that's why I base my recommendation on, commissioners.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Before we get the voting on this.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
APRC, do they have a building in Franklin?
Yes, they provide ship services.
No, 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 no. I asked...
But I was going to explain why, why, why I said yes. They provide ship services to other counties and each county, they go out and they get a billing inspector for the ship program. They try to get a local billing inspector for the ship, for that program in that county.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about a house.
A building.
Building.
They have an office?
No, they do not have an office in the county at this time.
Well...
I'm sorry, sir. I thought you said a billing inspector. I'm so sorry.
I'd like to see somebody with a building. They need to, because you've got some confidential information and all that ship program. You've got all them people's personal confidential. And that stuff got to be on lockdown. Somebody still get to it sometime, but they still can get to it, you know, you can't stop a thief. But they need a building and they got to be secured because you've got a lot of them people's personal information, social security number and everything. The other people got building?
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
I guess something to think about.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry, if, if the board does decide to, to request quotes, and again, I'm not saying hire any of these two at the moment, I'm just asking them for a proposal as to how they would provide the ship administrative services here in the county, we could make sure that they include that, that we request a local office for them to have that. But I'll say this, Commissioner Lockley, really and truly, those records are really property of the county, not of that person. So we really need to find somewhere where they can come and pull the files that they need and return those files when they're through. I mean, they might want to keep an electronic copy, but we, the clerk's office is responsible for those documents.
Right, that's what I was saying. They get, somebody get to lock them down.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes, I'm, I'm in the process, Lori and I are in the process of finding a way to secure the files that she has currently and we have to use that same procedure for future files. Yes, sir.
All right. Pleasure to the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to also be mindful of this. As we move to looking for an agency potentially, potentially to, to manage this department, I want to be mindful of the needs of the people, which I believe Commissioner Lockley was really saying that is my opinion that people need boots on the ground here in our county for our county's needs. And having a central location where folks can come, file for applications, and frankly, enjoy a personality that's there that can relate to their needs, I think is extremely important. So as we go forward on this, I'd like us to remember that point.
Yes, sir. And I'll, if, if the board goes in the direction of the two agencies I'm recommending, I'll let both of them know your concern, Commissioner Lockley's concerns.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Pierce.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Any more discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Hope you opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, we have Commissioner Lockley opposed. I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
And one more thing with the chairman, I want to be very clear to everyone, we're just requesting proposals. We're not engaging or hiring anyone here today, just requesting those two proposals. This board will have the right to reject both if they want to and we go in a different direction. I want to make that very clear for the record.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ted Mosteller, Inter Airport Manager.
Good morning, all. Ted Mosteller, airport. I have no action items this morning, however, a few items are mentioned or in the report. Just a few of the worthy issues we've addressed the last couple of weeks. If you have any, unless staff has some actions I have done.
Okay.
And any questions I could address?
Any questions, commissioners, for Mr. Mosteller today?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to, kind of going through my reporting, would you like me to address the Duke site readiness program at the airport site location now while Ted is at the podium or...
I think it'd be appropriate because, I mean, it's not airport property per se, but it's right by the airport.
Yeah, and, and let me start off, when I say airport, I meant there's an airport site, a site around the airport that we refer to, commissioners.
Please proceed.
So we're at page nine, item B. At your last meeting, there was some discussion regarding Duke Energy's interest in the airport as part of their site readiness program. The following is a better description of the program and if the board is interested, we could proceed today. The Duke Energy Site Readiness Program is intended to identify, assess, improve, and increase awareness of industrial sites at the Duke Energy Service, in the Duke Energy Service territory. The goal of the program is to increase the inventory of good industrial sites throughout the territories that Duke Energy serves and to advance the state of readiness of these sites. It is not a site certification process, but rather a program to help local economic development organizations find and prepare potential sites. However, a site that has been successfully completed, has successfully completed the recommendations from this program should have completed the initial steps required for certification in many states. End quote. Chairman Jones and Mr. Ted Mosteller, along with myself, participated in meetings and they may have some additional comments regarding the program. There is no direct cost to the county unless the county decides to remove the airport site, what I should say, from the program, not the airport itself, the airport site, I should have said that, prior to three years, and it will be necessary for county staff to provide information via a request for information, Mr. Pierce, from the site selection firm on detailed information about the site in the county. I've reached out to Mr. Chris Wimsat of Duke Energy for better explanation regarding these two statements in the, in the letter of intent. The first one is, quote, "Further, it ensures that all parties recognize a financial investment that is being made by Duke Energy and acknowledge return requirements on that investment and if reimbursement is required, the costs will depend on how much of the site readiness work has been completed at the time, not to exceed $20,000." Both of those statement. The board is interested in proceeding with this project and since it will be three weeks before the next regular meeting, the board could authorize proceeding with the program and the chairman's signature on the letter of intent contingent on staffs and the county's attorneys' review and approval. Basically, I need clarification on those two statements and I'm sure Attorney Schuler, that's his red flag right away. He would also want the same thing. And if we are good with that, then I would like to move on with this program because I think it's good for the county once we get past that, those statements about acknowledging Duke's investment and the return, the reimbursement if we pull out prior to their three-year deadline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Where, what particular property are they talking about?
On the east side of the airport.
Yes.
In between where the two road, the other road used to be.
Okay. And it says it's got to be zoned industrial after reading what you sent, commissioners. It has, is it already zoned industrial?
Although airport is zoned industrial, so I think the whole thing is already industrial.
Okay. And it has to remain industrial?
Yes. That's where the rub goes that I need to make sure, not just keeping the zoning, but what else are they wanting from us exactly?
That's it.
That's what I read.
You attend the meetings, I did.
But I didn't know where the property was because I wasn't fully reading.
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Chairman, do you want to touch on, is it the same, how close is it to the area, the same area that we were doing the Brownsville?
It's exactly the same area, part of it is. Yeah, ARPC is in the middle of doing a Brownfield study on that site in between because of past uses of the property to make sure that it's going to be able to be used. And if there's any mitigation needs to be done to make it usable, that we'll know what step it is to take. They're in the middle of that. They haven't got to a place for reporting about that yet. So that's why it hasn't been brought to you since you guys approved us starting that process. I will say from attending the meetings, it appears that Duke Energy is, is wanting to do things in our small community and I'm just astounded that they are. I mean, they're currently working on a year-long project on St. George Island for hurricane hardening, past Hurricane Michael. This is the first site in the state they've selected with St. George Island. And then they call us and saying they want to do this potential help for economic development for Franklin County because here's the issue, commissioners and, and public. So if somebody is wanting to locate to this county for their business, we're currently not set up to be able to process that and the speed at which business demands. This site selection process is going to not only help identify that there are sites in the county, but people will be able to get things answered quickly as far as availability, infrastructure, needs that they have for the business they're looking for in a more timely fashion because of this process. And the, the three-year thing they're talking about is just saying we can't tell them, you know, two years into it, we've, we've still not got anybody on the site, somehow you guys did something wrong, we just forget it, we don't want to do it no more. Then we're liable to have to pay some money. You know, as long, as long as the property has been sitting there for how many years now? As long as it's sitting there waiting on somebody, there's no harm, no foul, and we won't have any investment in this process. So just to make you aware of that.
Commissioner Lockley, a couple of things that hopefully will help in the job creation that you referred to. And I think it was the old, was that the old city dump, Commissioner, is what they refer to?
One time it was.
One time it was.
Allegedly.
Alleg, I'm sorry, allegedly, allegedly.
And I, I will say, Michael, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention. The hope is, my hope is, if we can get this process done, we've had a, as a board, we've had a tremendous hurdle in trying to draw down funds through Triumph. This maybe will be a step in that direction. I know it'll be a step in the direction of helping supply for some of the different state rule infrastructure fund dollars and different things that are available. We're missing the link in between, and I think this is part of it.
So this might help with that clawback, Commissioner Parrish, that, you know, we.
My, my question is, is before we proceed with this, do we need to wait for ARPC to conclude that this site is available and can be used in the fashion that we want it to be used? If you move forward with Duke Energy, but then the, the study comes back and says, well, this site's really not what you want, then we've moved forward?
That's true.
I mean, so, so do we need to hold off on this until?
No, no, so, so what I did, I did mention at the meeting about the study that ARPC was doing, so why I'm going to put ARPC in contact with, with Duke that's working on this project and let them make sure that it all is well. So if we, I would prefer that we go ahead and approve it, and if Duke and ARPC talk and Duke comes back and say, hey, we got a way, then, then I'd rather they tell us that than we hold off on it. I'd like to move on with this, if everybody's in agreement with this project as soon as we possibly can.
Mr. Chairman, my only concern is, I know three years isn't long in the grand scheme of things, but who's to say something doesn't happen, we pull out before that three years, and I guess we're going to owe Duke Energy money? How are we going to, I mean, I'm talking preemptively, but, you know, we got to look at that too. I don't think it'll happen, but I mean, I can't guarantee that either. And that was, that's my only concern about the whole verbiage of this. I mean, I think it's a great idea if we can bring businesses and they can bring jobs to our, our community and our airport, but that's my only concern is that part.
And I hear you, and that's what Attorney Schuler and I would really like to talk to him directly about it, and get back to each of you individually and say, hey, this is what they, they said. That's, that's where the contingency comes in. And I, Commissioner, you're absolutely right.
What they saying, 20,000 now?
No, they say a cap of 20,000.
Look. The future. We always talking about the future. I've been talking about it 20 years, 18 years. Ain't done nothing. We need to get something going. If there's a possibility to get something going for the future of these young folks. Because I'm old, it ain't going to hit me. But I, I'm willing to take a chance. It's going to help the kids in the future. Hopefully, it will. At least I can say I tried, I've been trying all the time, but try one more time. I won't, I'm going to hit a home run before I get out of here. That's what I want to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a second. Commissioner Lockley, is that a motion you're making, sir?
Yes.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley.
Second with comment.
All right, second by Commissioner Bolt. Commissioner Bolt, please proceed.
Thank you. That airport is a diamond in the rough. There is so much infrastructure there, so much potential. If you think about our neighbors over to the west in Gulf County and some of the work that's been going on in that area, I think we need to do anything possible to ready that airport and that surrounding area for industrial infusion. And I think $20,000 is a minimal potential investment, should it come to that. This is, I think, good value, and I'm in favor of proceeding onward.
Any more discussion before we vote, commissioners? All in favor? All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
The only other my head that might have related to Ted is something.
Thank you, Mr. Ted, we appreciate you.
Thank you, thank you.
What, okay, so.
Michael, hold on, before we proceed with Ms. Courtney, she's going to do some informational items and show some stuff before we go to the public hearing?
Yes, that's her report, but you can, if, I was going to say it starts.
Starts in 25 minutes. Can we try to do some of these other reports? So we're going straight from Ms. Courtney to the public hearings?
We could do it that way. Do you want, do you want me to finish my report, and then we save the best for last? The last.
I'm just trying to find a way to fit it all in.
I, I, I hear you.
In the timeframe. Mr. Davis, you have something to say?
Yeah, commissioners, I forgot to mention to you, the ball field lights. We have some that is out between D.W. Wilson and Veromen Park. I would like to use the remaining option proceeds to get them ready, to purchase the lights, to get them ready for the day of ball.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Before we proceed, is there anybody in the room that would like to comment publicly on this item before the board takes action? If it was not on our agenda, and if you wish to comment on it, you do have that time and space to do so. Mr. Moore, would you please ask online?
Anyone attended virtually by Zoom would like to, to comment on this particular motion that's in front of board at the moment that is using the balance of the auction funds for the, for this department to use for like, for Parks and Rec, to use to replace lights to get ready for day of ball. Please raise your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Yes, sir.
When is the day of ball?
The second, weekend of April, I believe it is.
In April?
Yeah.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just for the record, Ms. Griffin and I have chatted about this purchase of lights, and it does comply with your new bid policy, will not require advertising.
Okay. That's good enough. All right, any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Good.
Thank you.
Play ball, play ball.
If the data's, if the data's any different, I'll let you all know.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
So, Mr. Moore, if we jump to your report, where does it pick up at, sir?
Well.
We did the ship thing.
Okay.
We did Duke Energy.
And we did A, B, and C. C. Let's go to D.
All right.
Which is wonderful news. Ms. Rachel Chestnut, a lifelong resident and practicing attorney, is interested in serving on the Planning and Zoning and Adjustment Board. Ms. Chestnut lives in unincorporated Apalachicola area next to the airport, so she would serve as District Four's representative on the P, on the PCA board. Please, quick, before she changed her mind, make a motion to appoint her to the board.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is unanimous vote.
Thank you so much, commissioners.
Is it full?
Yay.
We need one more alternate, correct?
Well, what we had to do is move Commissioner Bolt's regular representative to alternate because he can attend every time, and Commissioner Bolt is going to find another, someone to fill his, his seat, his regular district two seat. So then we'll be full. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, that's your question. Yes, sir.
Michael, excuse me, would it be appropriate to put an ad in the local paper for my district needing a planning and zoning volunteer to get more interest in that area?
I could, if, if you think that'll help.
I do. Please.
I'm spending money, commissioners, I need a motion on that.
All right.
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward. Before we take any action and vote, since this was not on our agenda, does anyone in the room wish to speak about this item publicly? Seeing none, sir?
Mr. Chairman. Mike, can you, when you're doing this advertising, look to fill all the vacant spots that we got.
Might as well.
Sure.
In the same advertising.
Yes.
Not just one area, but.
Yes.
Whatever additional places might need to be filled. That way we do it all at one time.
Good idea.
So, do you, would you like to amend the motion to reflect these statements?
Yes, sir, I would. I'll amend it.
Okay, so the first and the second have been amended. Michael, please see if there's any one online.
Anyone attending online virtually through Zoom, would you like to comment on this item before the board takes a vote? Please raise your hand. No hands raised, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's a five-o vote.
Thank you.
Moving on to item E, sir. As the court system has ended its COVID-19 restriction, and the court system begins working through the backlog of court proceedings, staff needs some maintenance and custodial assistance for both buildings. I asked Mrs. Griffith, and she verified that there is enough funding in the courthouse maintenance budget to fund a part-time, a permanent part-time position at 1276 per hour. If you remember, last year I had come to you about a temporary part-time. That was in the same time, commissioner, everybody was having issues filling spots, we never got that filled. We still need that done.
You got money?
Aaron says he has money.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second with question?
Second by Commissioner Ward, please proceed.
My only concern and question is, I know that this is 1276 per hour, but with the new amendment, with the minimum wage increasing to $15, is that something that we maybe need to look at in the future?
Actually, it's within the pay plan, so each year that will actually.
Move up in the pay plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take it, probably four or five years to get there.
Any more discussion, commissioners?
Yeah, when you have, tell them to change that clock.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Commissioner, my last item is, I think, an email I sent you guys quite a few weeks ago, I believe, that ARPC is presenting the 850 Industrial Hemp Summit from April 26th to 28th at the Donna L. Tucker Civic Center in Tallahassee. If any of you are planning on attending, I will need to know as soon as possible, as early bird registration ends on March 25th, but I do need board action to prove traveling expenses for any board member that may plan to attend ARPC's 2022 Hemp Summit.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Parrish?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lockley, please proceed.
Well, Tim, what I consider, you would have.
They are, so that's something we've recently started with the Regional Planning Council on the backside of the devastation that happened in our nine-county region from Hurricane Michael. It hit Mexico Beach, but it also went through our region, and it destroyed a lot of the pine trees, the stuff that was available to be harvested. And this is an attempt by the Regional Planning Council to try to find some other business to attract to the area to offset the time it's going to take to grow pine trees, to get them back. There, there are some hurdles, because it does have to be hemp, it cannot be marijuana, the THC levels are different. But there, there are over 2,500 industrial uses for hemp, from clothes to towels to sheets, to, there's all kinds of different things. So the bigger thing is, that we haven't been able to do yet, but we're still working on, is to attract someone to the area to open a place to actually process. And then from there, there will probably be, it'll sprout up different people that can get in the industry and actually grow the hemp. But you need a processor pretty close by.
Yeah. Again, Commissioner, another way for job creation, Commissioner Lockley, that you keep pushing. Yes, sir.
Yeah, me too.
Let me know.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Sir, you're done with your report, huh?
Yes, sir. So I would recommend, if I may, you go to Attorney Schuler next. I don't think his report will take that long, and then.
Not if I can.
If he has anything to do with it, then we can break, and then we'll pick up with court news report and go straight to the public hearing.
Okay.
Ready, Mr. Chairman? Three action items for the board this morning. One is I'm requesting board authorization to schedule and conduct a public hearing on a code enforcement officer ordinance. This is based on the board's action last meeting that you were ready to proceed with consideration of code enforcement. The only thing I would note for the board is that my recommendation on the format for code enforcement is that it would involve only a code enforcement officer and a magistrate. There would not be any role played by the county commission per se in either ratifying or denying the, the special magistrate's decision.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Second item for action is, I have delivered to the board a draft request for proposals for services for a magistrate for code enforcement. My plan, if the board approves this, is not only would Mr. Moore publish this in whatever fashion he's going to publish it, but I would also list this request for proposals on the county attorney list service, which means that it will be published online for every county attorney in the state of Florida in all 67 counties.
Pleasure to the board?
So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt? Second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
The, the final action item is a request for board approval for the chairman to sign two contracts that are concerning your E911 services. I have not yet received the two contract amendments. However, I was informed at the end of last week that these amendments are required and have a deadline of March 31st, which is before your next meeting. Since we are in a tri-county service area, I would expect that the two contract amendments for consolidated and GEOCom will be the same as the amendments that were recently approved in Gulf County. I have attached to this report those, those two amendments. So I'm asking for the board to approve the chairman's signature contingent on the attorney's review. If I see something that's a problem that, that gets us out of kilter with what's going on with Gulf County and what they've already approved, then I'll put the brakes on it, and they'll just have to miss a deadline if necessary. However, I don't think that's going to happen. Both of these service providers have always worked well with the county. So that is the, the request that I have, is board approval, chairman's signature on these two contract amendments, subject to the attorney's review.
Pleasure to the board? Motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And those are all the action items that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Does the board have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Attorney Schuler?
Oh, wait, hang on, hang on. I had to add on after I sent my report out, I'm very sorry.
Oh, here we go.
My apologies to the board. An, an issue has come up regarding the penalty section of your two golf cart ordinances. One is on St. George Island, the other is on, in East Point. Apparently, there's been, I haven't fully completed my investigation, but when these ordinances, the first one was adopted in 2008, it appears that in the intervening 14 years or so, there, there may or may not have been some changes in the state statute that's created a little bit of confusion about whether or not the appropriate penalty is a uniform traffic citation and/or a county ordinance violation. And so I would request board permission to schedule a public hearing for the board to consider an ordinance clarifying the penalties and basically updating it so everything conforms with the current iteration of the state statute.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Attorney Schuler?
Yes, sir.
Since we're, you've asked us to schedule a public hearing, is it proper for us to call for public comment?
No, sir, this is merely procedural in nature, and you're not making any substantive decisions.
Okay. Any discussion from the board members before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
And I mean it this time, that's, that's the last action item I have for the board.
Well, let's take a five-minute break and now to give Ms. Courtney time to, and we'll come back.
In regards to the services that we offer. So we take care of individuals from birth to death. So if you have a newborn, please bring them in. Come see us. We'd love to take care of them. If you're early on and need a school physical, we'd love to take care of you. Young children typically are doing rather well, and we check in on their development and kind of leave them alone and let them grow like they're supposed to. We talk about diet, preventative medicine as well, but usually, young children are doing quite well. If we're in the middle of life and we have medical conditions or we want to start our preventative medicine, we'd love to take care of you. So my goal is to consider the big picture, make sure all of those specialists who specialize in the organ systems integrate that appropriately and are considering the big picture.
... and twice the laughs in the month of March at Appalachia's Living Dead, a downtown ghost tour. You'll have two weekends to see this tour in the month of March on the 4th and 5th and 18th and 19th. All tours start at 7:30 PM in front of the Chamber of Commerce in Apalachicola. You'll meet ghosts from the Forgotten Coast Pass who will tell you creepy and funny ghost stories, as well as local legends, including the legend of Tate's Hell. Tickets are $10 and $5 for kids 12 and under. Be there if you dare, March 4th and 5th and 18th and 19th for Appalachia's Living Dead.
Petey Fisk inviting you to see me in the Off-Broadway smash hit, Greater Tuna, April 8th through the 10th, at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola. And there are over 20 characters in the show, and they're all being played by two men, and they play the lady parts, too, if you can believe it. Tickets are $25 each, and you can get them online at coastaltheater.com or at the door. Greater Tuna, April 8th through the 10th, at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola.
You'll have a hilariously good time at Jerry Hurley's Sweet Tea at the B&amp;B. The show will make its world premiere March 25th through the 27th at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola. You'll meet a cast of characters including the family matriarch Cleopatra, grandson Beau, Uncle Bertie, and others, including a few ladies of the night, Trixie, Mona, and Velvet. Sweet Tea at the B&amp;B, March 25th through the 27th. The show is directed by Judy Loftus. Get tickets online at panhandleplayers.com or at the door. This event is funded in part by the Franklin County TDC.
Today, we're going to discuss diabetes. Another chronic condition that we face a lot in primary care is diabetes or insulin resistance, specifically type 2. With diabetes, not only can you manage it with improving your diet and decreasing carbohydrate consumption, but there are plenty of medications that are out of the market that attack that pathology from different directions. And if you have any questions or concerns or you want to talk about your diet or preventing the progression of that disease, come see me at Leam's Memorial, and I'd love to take care of you.
Can't be near the beautiful beaches of Franklin County? Tune into Forgotten Coast TV, Franklin County's local cable channel. Watch shows and videos about our beautiful area, including our beaches, museums, shops, and more. Watch it wherever you are on Roku and Amazon TV. Also, make sure you like us on Facebook and subscribe on YouTube. Forgotten Coast TV is beachin' TV.
This address, well, let's try my address. Here you see the different coatings, color coatings. This one behind me, you can click here, and then there's a little tab at the top. You click over to the right, and it'll tell you that's R4. So that's our new GIS map.
Courtney, was this done by ARPC, or who did this work?
Um, Michael, what was her name?
It was Davina at ARPC.
Yes.
You guys signed, you guys approved this for me months ago.
Right.
And this is the result of that. This helps everyone. This helps a lot of realtors now. A lot of our calls, I'm sorry, a lot of calls that comes to Courtney is basically, can you please tell me the zoning of this particular lot? I mean, you'd be surprised how many calls a day we get that. So this is now a tool for the public. Anybody could go to a GIS map and see the zoning of any property. And for instance, today, you got a number of land use changes in front of you. When those are addressed, dealt with, that will be sent to ARPC, and the map will be updated. Because if the map isn't updated on a monthly basis every time we have land use changes, zoning changes, what's the point? So basically, that's what will be happening from now on. So, you know, we'll have an ongoing agreement with ARPC to manage this GIS map. But this, this helps a whole lot. I think they incorporated some of your property appraisers' map information, too, so you get the best of both worlds here with this GIS map.
Okay. Good.
I like how clear it is, too. So much better.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, too, I really like this, because myself, when I go and I research what's on the agenda in terms of land use change, I go to the property appraisers' website, and they do a phenomenal job, but it doesn't say what zoning it is currently. So I think this helps with knowing... And I like the color codes, too, because you know, I think that blue's residential and yellow's commercial. Or different colors represent different things. I think that's just easy to look at for everybody.
Courtney, how'd you just do that? I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to interrupt you just...
Okay, so at the top here?
I went looking, I seen the change.
When she started talking about the different color coatings, I just happened to pull it up, sorry.
Okay.
Here, it'll show you exactly everything that's...
Okay. Good. I'm sorry, Commissioner Ward, what'd you do? I wasn't trying to cut you off.
Yes, no, I was, I just was thinking, this is so much easier to look up and look at things, so...
And soon I'll be working with revising the planning services page to where if it's zone R1, R2, there'll be an actual link. They won't have to download the entire PDF of the ordinance. They can actually click on it and pull up their zoning straight from the page.
So basically, she's creating hot links to each zone. Zonings, they can find that information directly also.
Good. Great job. That looks very good, Courtney.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions before we proceed, commissioners? Are you good? All right, thank you, Courtney. Please proceed.
The second thing on my information is we met with a vendor to create a planning and zoning code and code enforcement database that should be up and running within the next couple of weeks. So that'll keep track of anything that goes before planning and zoning. It'll also keep track of anything like variances, stuff like that, that if anyone has any questions, we'll have that information right there at our hands. We won't have to go search for it and pay before. And then with the code enforcement, any type of issues that come up, we will keep track of it on the database with comments to know, you know, when it closed, if it's still pending, or what's the status on it, so...
Okay.
And also, commissioners, that will also be the same database that we will use to track county projects. So if somebody wants to know where we are with Island View Park, for instance, you know, they'll be able to go there and click on that and see if it went out to bid, who was the successful bidder, what contractor's doing, when they think they're going to start and when they think they're going to end, and anything that happens in between.
We do have a mandatory prebid for Island View Park on Thursday, so...
So, yes, that database will extend to...
What's going to happen there?
A mandatory prebid.
10 o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
On what?
Thursday.
This coming Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes. So that database will be tracking three things for us. So Courtney's meeting with that vendor every week to get that created.
Okay. Right away. Anything else, Ms. Courtney, before we proceed with our public hearings?
The only other thing I have is that the building official, I actually went and investigated the concerns that we started getting in. We, on March 9th, we went and investigated about three or four different concerns.
Okay, sounds good.
That's it.
All right, so Attorney Schuler? I guess we'll now proceed with our public hearings.
Actually, Courtney's going to host those for you.
Oh, okay.
Did you see the...
Go ahead, Courtney.
Did you see the attorney's expression when you said that?
Hey, listen. You gotta be ready to go. You gotta be ready to go. All right, Courtney, please proceed.
Okay, so the first one that we have is I need to mention, okay, it should be 89 Otter Slide Road instead of 79 Otter Slide Road. So I wanted to go on record saying that. That needs to be updated. The address is incorrect. But this is an ordinance admitting the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan to change the permitted use of a fourth acre parcel and land in Section 30, Township 8, South Range 6, from single families to commercial mixed use.
Okay.
While she's opening the map, Commissioner, I want to let you know, even though it said 79, she put the sign in front of the correct property, so anybody driving by would see the notifications for zoning and land use still in front the right line.
Okay.
The correct line.
All right. So is it appropriate to call for public comment first, Attorney Schuler, or two?
Yes, sir, that would be fine. Just for the record, Ms. Courtney, what was the recommendation from planning and zoning?
It was just recommended to...
To...
For approval. These are ones done when I was there.
Did she say approval?
She said approval.
Okay.
Apparently, we're having some internet issues, it looks like. Yes.
So, Mr. Pierce, you were there in the recommendation from P and Z?
Well, actually, I'm saying that I don't know what parcel is, but all the ones I was there, it was approved. So this is the first one.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, public comment at this time would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone in the room wish to publicly comment about this item? That's before the board. This is a public hearing. This is your time to speak if you choose to do so.
Recording in progress.
Commissioner, could we pause a second? Look, we're having some internet...
I can't hear any more.
We're having internet issues. I'm sorry. Hold on one second for me. Yeah, that could usually isn't the issue, but... What about now, Courtney? Are we good? Oh, I'm sorry. No, it went back to... What about now, Courtney? Are we good now?
Yes.
Okay. You sound really happy. Okay, so the question was, was it approved by P and Z? And it was recommended, correct?
Correct.
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 I think we're back on now, Royce. We're good? And you're into it? Okay, good. Thank you.
So I don't think there's any public comment in the room. There is nobody stood up, so would you please ask for online, sir?
Is there anyone online would like to comment on this public, I'm sorry, on this land use change? This public hearing, land use change, 89 Otter Slide? Please raise your hand. I'll ask a second time. Third? No, sir. No one raised a hand to comment on this particular public hearing.
Okay. Is it appropriate to ask Mr. Miller if he has anything to say before the board? Does anything further, Attorney Schuler? We didn't have to, but I'm just saying.
He doesn't have to, but it's always appropriate if he wants to say anything he can, or it would be appropriate for board discussion as well.
Okay. Well, I will say this. I've talked to Mr. Miller about this several times. I've talked to property owners in the area. I don't know anybody that's opposed to this land use change. But it is a pleasure to the board from there, unless there's other discussion to be had.
Mr. Chairman, I just like with moving forward. I know stormwater drainage was brought up earlier in the meeting. And I think moving forward, and I think I've mentioned this before in the past, anything that comes up in terms of building for our county, I think we need to make a point to know. I know Mr. Currenton is real good about it, too. Make sure that anything that's built or anything like that has proper stormwater drainage, so we're not having the issues that we have at La Bree, La Cressis. That's just my opinion. But with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Please proceed, Courtney.
Okay. Next would be the zoning change for 89 Otter Slide Road. This first one was the land use, and this one will be the land use change. From R4 to C4.
Okay.
So move.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward, but before we proceed, is there anyone in the room that would like to comment about this item before the board takes action today? Could you please check on Zoom, sir?
Same question for those attending via Zoom, virtually. Any questions or comments on this particular zoning change? Indicate so by raising your hand. No hands raised. Mr. Chairman.
All right. So we do have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Bolt, did you second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion, commissioners, before we vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Courtney, please proceed.
Okay. Next, we have a zoning change for 1.39 acre parcel of land at 478 Avenue A from R4 to R8.
And, Mr. Chairman, this did not require a land use change, because people say, well, why? Because the zoning that we're proposing is within the same land use.
It's residential to residential.
Yes.
Right. Okay. All right. Is there anyone publicly that would like to comment about this item? This is a time for public comment. And it is a public hearing. Could you please check on Zoom, sir?
This also applies if you're attending via Zoom. If you'd like to comment this particular zoning change, please do so and indicate by raising your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? Courtney, for the record, what was the recommendation from planning and zoning on the land use change at 478 Avenue A, East Point?
To approve.
Thank you.
And I will say, just to make the public aware, everyone else aware, that the residents that live around this area, the only concern they had was that we weren't doing some kind of change that was going to allow for this to be basically an RV park, but that's not the land use that's being sought after here. So I assured them that that was not the land use. This is for multi-family, medium-density district residential. So... Pleasure to the board.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Lockman and a second by Commissioner Bolt. That is correct. Right? Okay.
Correct.
Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. All right, Courtney, please proceed.
Okay, um, next we have a land use change for um a one acre parcel of land at sixteen North Franklin Street in East Point from R four single-family home industry to C four commercial residential mixed use.
Uh, is there anyone in the public would like to comment about this item here in the room? Can you see none? Mr. Monroe, would you ask on Zoom, please?
Same goes virtually, anyone attending by Zoom that would like to comment on this particular land use change? Please do so by raising your hand. No hands raised, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Courtney, what was the recommendation from planning and zoning on this land use change at sixteen North Franklin, East Point, Florida, from single family or from residential to commercial?
To approve.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, just by way of talking about this one as well, since these, all three of these just happen to be in my district. I don't know of anybody that was opposed to this, there was some discussion with me by residents about commercial being north of the power line in East Point. Um, but I think that's consistent with what the residents of East Point are considering going forward for our future. Um, we do have a lot of activity currently in East Point. Uh, finally, I grew up there my whole life, we haven't had a whole lot of uh business development there, but we have room for it and uh this is consistent with what everybody's looking for, to my knowledge.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I might have missed it, I see a raised hand by Evan Thomas, I'm going to click to allow to talk if you do not mind.
That's fine.
Hey Evan, I've unmuted you on my end, did you want to address the board on this particular item?
Um, I do.
Okay, proceed, please, state your name for the record, I apologize, and address the board, please.
Absolutely, Evan Thomas. Um, as looking at the um application line fifteen under sewer and water, will this development be served by central water and sewer, or will it be on individual water uh wells and septic tanks, it was listed as yes? I believe they should state whether it would be one or the other.
Yeah.
I can answer that.
Okay.
So it's going to be water and sewer?
I I didn't catch it on the other ones.
I'm sorry.
Because I was.
Okay.
But.
Avenue A is going to be under water and sewer. Otter Slide is also going to be have water and sewer. Um, all all three of them, and sixteen North Franklin Street will also have water and sewer.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, five. Ms. Courtney, it's Michael, when you say water and sewer, you're referring to the central water and sewer provided by the East Point uh Water District, Water and Sewer District?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, did you have anything else?
I do not, thank you.
No problem, thank you, sir. All right, so did, has there been a motion yet on this?
No, sir.
Okay, I couldn't remember, trying to keep up. So it's a pleasure of the board?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Pierce? Second by Commissioner Lockland?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to point out that I I think this is part of the reason why East Point is becoming more and more commercial bias because of the formal uh water and sewer infrastructure there. It's very compatible for uh future development in commercial areas, and this is one good example of it.
Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous. Ms. Courtney, please proceed.
Okay, so the last thing would be uh for that one would be the uh zoning change for sixteen Franklin Street.
Okay, this is a public hearing, this is a time that we would entertain public comment on this matter. Is there anyone in the room that wishes to speak about this zoning change? Michael, could you please ask our Zoom attendees?
Attendees, attending attendees, uh if you have, would you like to comment on this zoning change at sixteen North Franklin Street? Uh, please indicate so by raising your hand. Uh, second time? Going a third time, no raised hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, pleasure of the board?
So move and to approve.
Okay, one motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt, any more discussion before we vote, Commissioners? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
So, Mr. Chairman, we moved a little faster than anticipated we would, and so the St. James Bay uh is scheduled at eleven, been advertised for eleven, so we we can start after eleven, we cannot start before eleven.
Okay.
So I don't know if you'd like to squeeze in one or two items from Mrs. Griffin on this?
Um.
Or this, do you want to take another quick break, what what direction would you like to go in, sir?
Let's just take a break, that way we know we're starting right at eleven, like it's advertised.
Okay, so everyone uh in in the audience and everyone attending via Zoom, we will uh go to recess, we will resume at eleven o'clock, where we'll take up on page five, item twenty-one, the land use change for St. James Development.
Petey Fisk inviting you to see me in the Off-Broadway smash hit, Greater Tuna, April eighth through the tenth at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola, and there are over twenty characters in the show, and they're all being played by two men, and they play the lady parts too, if you can believe it. Tickets are twenty-five dollars each, and you can get them online at coastaltheater.com or at the door. Greater Tuna, April eighth through the tenth, at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola.
You'll have a hilariously good time at Jerry Hurley's Sweet Tea at the B and B. The show will make its world premiere March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola. You'll meet a cast of characters including the family matriarch Cleopatra, grandson Beau, Uncle Birdie, and others including a few ladies of the night, Trixie, Mona, and Velvet. Sweet Tea at the B and B, March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. The show is directed by Judy Loftus. Get tickets online at panhandleplayers.com or at the door. This event is funded in part by the Franklin County TDC. Fisherman's Choice Bait and Tackle has all you need for your day of fishing. They have fresh and saltwater bait, an unmatched selection of mirror lures, and a wide selection of Berkeley gulp, plus fresh and live bait, and all the rigs and tackle you need for a great day of fishing, including brands like Penn and Shimano. They are also the only bait and tackle shop in Franklin County where you can get a fishing license. And don't miss their wide selection of marine supplies, coolers, and more. Fisherman's Choice is located at three thirty, Highway ninety-eight, and East Point.
I'm David Newton, I'm the new primary care physician in town. Um, I moved here from Montana, and I'm currently working at both Weems East and West Clinic. I'm here uh working as a primary care physician, but also take care of my patients in the inpatient setting, so if you're hospitalized here at Weems, you'll see me as well. Or if you need to rehab after um a significant event, and you need to participate in our swing bed program, I'll also be taking care of you. Even though I only work in the Weems Memorial System, I'm actually employed by Tallahassee Memorial Physician Partners, I'm the Franklin County branch. They've established a partnership, which I'm very grateful for, which allows me to be an employee of Tallahassee Memorial and work very closely with the numerous resources that they have, as well as working in the area that I wanted to work in, which is rural family medicine and practice in Apalachicola. Once again, I'm Dr. David Newton. If you have any medical concerns or want to talk to somebody about medical conditions you're experiencing, just give me a call here at Weems, and I'd love to take care of you. If you see me out in public, I'll probably be carrying around a little pug named Dr. Pepper, we'd love to talk to you. So just stop and say, hey, what's up? And uh, I'd love to have a conversation with you, or just shoot the breeze.
In our beautiful piece of paradise, please make sure you visit our local shops, restaurants, galleries, and take some time to experience something different, and take a fishing trip or tour with one of our experienced guides. Our neighbors and their businesses are the heartbeat of our community. Thank you for visiting, and remember to shop local, eat local, and fish local. This message is brought to you by the Apalachicola Bait Chamber of Commerce.
Petey Fisk inviting you to see me in the Off-Broadway smash hit, Greater Tuna, April eighth through the tenth at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola, and there are over twenty characters in the show, and they're all being played by two men, and they play the lady parts too, if you can believe it. Tickets are twenty-five dollars each, and you can get them online at coastaltheater.com or at the door. Greater Tuna, April eighth through the tenth, at the Chapman Theater in Apalachicola.
Franklin County Board of County Commissions now back in session. We are still doing some public hearings. Up next is a land use, potential land use change for St. James Bay development. Ms. Courtney, please proceed.
This one, I believe, Mr. Kirin.
Oh, my bad. Okay. All right.
Okay, this is the second public hearing. The actual adoption hearing for a land use change over near St. James Bay for 79.67 acres. Going from public facilities to mixed-use residential. And also as part of this, we're having a proposal to change the zoning from public facilities to St. James Bay or St. James West planned unit development to allow the development in this area. We held the first, the transmittal public hearing back in January, on January the 18th for this proposal. We received comments back from various state agencies. Only two agencies had anything to say about it. The Department of Transportation had some concerns about the traffic analysis that we had sent in. Basically, they said that we had not analyzed, or the applicant had not analyzed all the traffic that could potentially be generated. What they were looking at was the total amount that could be allowed under the new land use. But the applicant is not proposing to do that in the PUD ordinance. Restrictions them to no more than 119 units, which is, you know, what they analyzed for. So I think that, you know, we can address that very easily because of the PUD ordinance. The other comment was from the Fish and Wildlife Commission. And they had concerns that the, that the people there, really it's more suggestions that the people, you know, moving into the, this area be made aware of the presence of bears and how bears could interact with the people. And I think that can be easily addressed too. They suggested using some of their literature, giving it to the homeowners when they purchase property in this area, just to educate them on the bears and how to interact and prevent conflicts between people and bears.
Mr. Kirin, before we proceed with public comment, I do have one question because I wasn't on the board when it first transpired. So the actual uses they're wanting to do, is that already recorded? Or is that something they would have to come back at a future time for us to like do a site approval for? How does that work?
Well, they, they will need to do a subdivision plat for the single-family area. So they will be coming back with a subdivision plat that y'all will have to approve. And they will need to do a site plan for the multifamily area that y'all would have to approve.
And that's conditioned upon approval today?
Yes, yes, sir.
I just wanted to part of the original discussion, want to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Those two, those two stages are going to be, are going to be represented on the PUD ordinance now. It lists the number of units and has a site plan associated. So it's just going to be more formality because you're seeing today what's going to be built.
Okay.
Right, right. I mean, basically, they will come in, you know, with their, say for the multifamily, they'll come in with their stormwater and all that. And, you know, the parking plan. And basically, as long as they have their, you know, the required number of parking spaces, they're dealing with the stormwater, you know, meeting the flood requirements and all. You know, that's the sort of things y'all are going to see next.
Okay, cool. I just want to make sure where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just procedurally, before we move forward with the public hearing, I have consulted with and advised Commissioner Bolt that he has a conflict based on basically a long-term lease that he has with the applicant for basically his apartment where he lives. So he will not be making either a motion or a vote. And Mr. Morong will fill out the appropriate form to file with the state agency.
Okay.
We have to keep them doors on because of the sunshine law. I mean, no harm, man.
All right, so call for public comment first. What's the procedure, sir?
Well, Mr., I think the applicant is at the podium. We would like to make a presentation. But you can either take public comment before or after the presentation.
That's fine. Sir, please step forward, state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is John Green. Thank you. Good morning. Yes, we are under contract to buy this 79 acres. It sits adjacent to St. James Bay. We have found, the property is currently zoned institutional, I believe. Mark, is that not correct?
I think it's public facilities.
Public facilities. So, and I think that was part of the reason that the rehab, St. James Bay rehab facility was located there because it carried that underlying land use. What we have found at St. James Bay is a couple of things. One is that we have a very difficult time finding employees, keeping employees because there's very few places for people to live. Nice, clean apartments and very difficult. As Franklin County continues to generate jobs that are often hospitality, you know, workforce-type jobs, teachers, policemen, whatever it is, firemen, whatever it is. It's very hard to find places to live. We have a builder at St. James today, St. James Bay today, who's building single-family homes. And you can't get under 350, 375 to build a single-family home today. It's almost impossible. Very difficult. So what we see is a lot of turnover in employees. We've talked to the rehab facility adjacent to us. They share the same problem that we do. A lot of turnover. But between St. James Bay and the rehab facility, we've got like 80 to 90 employees that live there or that work there at different times. So we saw this as an opportunity to address some of the challenge that we have in keeping employees and finding a place for them to live. You know, if we can figure out how to make the numbers work on the apartments. So that was the idea behind the neighborhood of apartments adjacent to the rehab facility. So we've shown a 48-unit apartment complex or community on the roughly three or four acres that sit next to the rehab facility. And then there's some property across Crooked River Road. Approximately 20 acres are shown. We saw a neighborhood there of 64 single-family lots. But what our hope is that the single-family lots there, we can get those in in that $300,000 price range, maybe three and a quarter. And then the apartments, we think will go a long way to help alleviate the workforce housing challenges that we have. You know, we were in front of you last year to talk about approval to build a hotel at St. James Bay, which this board approved. But here again, if, if and when we start that part of the development, we're going to still have the same problem of finding employees. Where are they going to live? Where are they going to stay? Where are they going to commute from? So we think this is a very good opportunity to address a need that the county has. And also, it's going to help us, it's going to help the rehab facility as a place for people to live and work and be able to walk to work, which I think will be a unique situation here in Franklin County. As far as the single-family goes, we expect this probably to be, you know, ranch homes, probably age-restricted. People that'll want to play golf at St. James Bay, eat at the restaurant at St. James Bay, grab their golf cart and drive over, which is, should be good for us, good for the community, good for St. James Bay, and good for Franklin County. We all know that at one time, St. James Bay was approved for over 520 units. We're slowly making progress on that. But I think today, we've still only got about probably 40 full-time residents. I think it's growing now that we've got some houses going up at St. James Bay. But there is plenty of capacity in the road network to add this in. A lot of the lots and units at St. James Bay that were approved back in '05, '06 are probably not going to get built. Lot of the lots are too small. So people are buying two lots and building one house on them to combine them. And so you're going to see a lot of those units just never get built. Consequently, we've got plenty of capacity on the roadways. Carabelle's got sufficient capacity on sewer and water to service the development. And we've provided documents to support that to the county. So we think it's a good opportunity for us to do something that's going to hopefully be profitable for us, but also address a need that the county has and that we have. So we think it makes a lot of sense. And regarding the public facilities, current land use on the property, I don't even know what that would be, to be honest with you. So we think what we're proposing to do makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to hear and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners, you have any questions?
You said all the houses going to be, you said all them houses going to be $300,000?
Well, I, it would be nice to build, you know, the housing market we've got today is just crazy. The costs are going up quicker than people's ability to afford them. And that's the big problem. But as people move in from the north and move down this way, I think a lot of empty nesters would love to buy a house for $300,000. Within St. James Bay, we can't build a house for $300,000. There's no way. So this would be an opportunity to come in a little bit under what our current housing market stock is. But I don't see any way to price under that. So I think it'll be around $300,000.
John, the reason you're saying that, that St. James Bay has size requirements on the house, right, that St. James Bay has to be large, though, what you're expecting to build?
Yeah, we're thinking.
That's the difference.
Yeah, we're thinking here probably about 1,500 square feet, 14, 15, which, St. James Bay has a neighborhood or two where you can do that. But, but not very many places that you can do that. Plus, there's some architectural requirements at St. James Bay that are pretty onerous and pretty expensive. This way, we'd be able to build a nice house without some of the things that are required within St. James Bay that are kind of difficult to meet and are a challenge for everybody.
Mr. Chairman, my question is, I know you said workforce housing. Obviously, $300,000 to me is not workforce housing.
I meant that on the apartments.
Okay.
On the apartments. The single-family, single-family can be workforce housing. But what the buyers that we're seeing at St. James Bay today, and I think it's going to continue, there's a lot of people that are retired or semi-retired. They may have a second house somewhere or this is their primary residence. They're probably not leaving St. James Bay to go to work every day. Some are, but some are not. They may or may not have kids in the school. But the apartments specifically would be an alternative for people that are working and need a place to live and can't afford, exactly, can't afford a $300,000 house. Can't afford to afford a $1,000 house. Again, we've, new teachers, new sheriff people, people at the prison, and people in the hospitality industry, they don't, unfortunately, they don't make a lot of money. So.
And just one more question. The apartments that you speak of, obviously, I don't know, a mortgage, a $300,000 mortgage, depending upon the percentage rates, you know, $1,500 a month payment. These apartments, they're going to be affordable and where people can afford the rent on the apartments?
We hope so. We hope so. It's, you know, we've not proposed low-income housing. We have not proposed subsidized housing. The workforce housing is kind of the flavor of the month. Everybody uses that term. But you've got to realize what a challenge that is. Secondly, rent, the rental numbers on a year-round basis here are not that strong because the rental market is so skewed here with seasonal rentals that, you know, you see all these big numbers on rental houses on St. George Island or summer camp or anyplace else. But at the end of the day, somebody that can afford 1,500 a month, 1,600 a month for a nice apartment, go find it. Go find it. So that's what we're going to try to do, is give people that are working and need a nice, clean place to live in that part of the county. There's just nothing there.
Any more questions? All right. Sir, I think we'll, thank you for your time. I think we'll proceed now with public comment.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Public comment? Oh, you got a question? I'm sorry, sir. Commissioner Locksley had a question.
Yes, sir.
Is you planning on getting affordable houses to the county for something? For development like this?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the question, sir. Say it again.
Are you planning on getting, putting affordable houses in a, when we, when you're building something like this, sir? The county you like for something, like affordable houses?
Well, we've offered to make a contribution. If that's, I'm sorry. Yeah, we've proposed to make a contribution to your, I'm not sure exactly what you call it, your Affordable Housing Fund for Franklin County, something like that. So we've proposed, I think, 500 a unit or something like that. We thought made sense, just to help.
They proposed $500 for each unit on the initial sale to go to a, you know, qualified entity selected by the county for the purpose of developing affordable housing.
I did want that on the record.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's in the PUD ordinance.
Okay. Commissioner Locksley? Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll call for public comment. Anyone else who speaks, please come forward, state your name for the record. Have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Chester Butler. I live at 141 Roll-Torn Way in St. James. And I publicly said both to the public and to John that as residents of that area, the developer's success and our success go hand in hand. However, at this point, I'm at a stop sign because there are issues that have not been fully fleshed out for me. Both Commissioners have hit on two of those. One of them is what is affordable? And I'm not so sure, I have to agree with FWC, I'm not so sure. Moving more people into, directly into the path of bear country. I video a bear every other week on my patio. The night in St. James Bay belongs to the bears. That's just the way it is. Now, I happen to enjoy that. Many of my neighbors do. But this issue, when we have over, I think you said over 500 lots, John? And we have something, I think now 70, 17 homes? And of those 17 homes, this issue is a concern to those of us that have lived there for a long time. Let me give you an idea. Would everybody here from St. James Bay that owns a home raise their hand? Are you getting the picture yet, gentlemen, ladies? We need answers. I want answers on the stormwater drainage. I want answers on the traffic control. When John proposed to build an RV park back in the back, one of the big issues was traffic control. We already have speed humps on the main drive through the subdivision. Let's talk of adding more. I think that we're going a little too fast when we have a development area and we have, we only have 17 permanent residents. Now, we're selling them slowly and that's a good thing. And I think the golf course has taken off a bit. And I think the restaurant has taken off a bit. And we're not opposed to helping the developer. We have a deal with the developer. He gets approximately $40,000 a year from us so that we get a discount on food at the restaurant. So we're not opposed to that. But we have a lot of questions. And affordable housing, the definition of affordable housing is very ambiguous as Commissioner Lockley has pointed out. And, and I'm sorry, John, but I'm going to have to disagree with you. I can't make a decision on hopes that we're going to get this project done. So for those reasons, I think we're moving a little fast. If I had more information, I may agree with this. But I can't agree with it today. And I'll let my neighbors have the floor. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time, sir. Anyone else who speaks? Please come forward and state your name for the record. Have three minutes.
My name is Paul Mitchell. I have a home and eight lots in St. James Bay. And my concerns evolve around, revolve around the development that's proposed. It appears very ambiguous. John does not indicate that he's nailed down what the costs are going to be. If he hasn't nailed down the cost, he hasn't nailed down the affordability. I moved up here from the Florida Keys. And we've had issues of affordable housing down there for my entire professional career. And what I, what I've come to see in affordable housing is that you folks as a government body, if you don't nail that down, if you don't define what affordable is going to be, it will not be affordable. It will eventually become a market rate unit. And it will cease to be the thing that you're looking for. You have to be able to demonstrate to the people who live here that need those houses, that need to have an affordable place to live, that they're going to have an affordable place to live in perpetuity. If it, if it has an expiration date or if it isn't defined, it's going to be a problem. Eventually, it will become a market rate unit and there will be no affordable housing. If you want, you can, I can put you in touch with some of my friends who are on the county commission in Monroe County. And they can, they can explain some of the problems that we've had down there. It's very important for you as a body to step in and define it and enforce it. Beside that issue, you know, we as owners, we really are in the dark on this proposal. We haven't gotten anything from John. We haven't really seen much of anything at all. And the devil is in the details in these kinds of projects. If we, if, if we don't see the details, you're not going to get buy-in from us because we're very concerned that that project is going to put stormwater on our, on our system. It's going to put traffic on our roads. It's going to introduce a lot of people into our community. And we want to know how that's going to be handled. It's very important to us. We have investments in our homes and in the property that we have. And we want to see that investment pay out for us in the long run. And it's important that that project be complementary to the St. James Bay as we see it. as we see it today. It doesn't sound like what John wants to do is more of the St. James Bay. It sounds like he wants something else. And we bought based on the definition of a community that we wanted to live in. And if he wants to build something different than that out there, it's gonna change our community. And we think that you, as a commission, should take that into account. And I echo what Chester said. We need to slow this thing down a little bit and have some information shared from the developer to the homeowners. And maybe you could get maybe either more buy-in or more opposition. But right now, we don't have enough information to be able to say we wanna support it. What we have enough information to say is there's not information enough for us to support it. And I personally am gonna oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Linda Murnane, 109 Laughing Gul Lane. And we are, we're just almost ready to move into a home. And we moved here because of St. James. We thought it was a beautiful community. We loved it. We fell in love with it. And it was more of an upscale area. And now, with these homes coming in, which is very close to ours, it's changed the community a whole lot. I mean, we've gone from upscale homes and down to, you wanna call it affordable, we'll call it low income, whatever you wanna call it. But it's not going to be the same as it was. And that was the sole purpose of us moving here, was to get to a nice community. I love all the people that live here. They're wonderful people. And we don't know what's going to be moving in. And it's just down the road. And I don't understand why we cannot have another entrance to this area, why we have to go down Crooked River Road. He shows a map here. It doesn't show where Anhinga is. It doesn't show where any of the golf course streets are, Spoonbill. Where is that, where's our community next to this community? Where's all these people that live, that are going to be living on Spoonbill next to this? And where on that map does it show where it has the apartments? Where does it show where the housing's going to be? It doesn't show it on there. We know that it's gonna be there somewhere, but we don't know where. And I'm just concerned about traffic. And I definitely want some kind of speed bumps on that road if it has to go through Crooked River Road. Because we are very close to it, and I know there's some residents here today that live right on the corner of Crooked River Road. And I know they're going to be concerned. And when you say 119 units, that could be double that in cars. 120, we have 240, 250 cars going there. That could be a lot of cars. Now, you're saying walking. I don't foresee too many people walking nowadays. Sure, they might because they're going to live there. They may do that. But when they come there, everybody's going to have a car. How do you get to the golf course? You're going to have a car. You aren't gonna walk there. So everybody that goes to live there is going to have a car. And all of that traffic's gonna go down Crooked River Road. And there are no sides on the road. It's a two-lane, and that's it. There's no, nothing else that you can go around. I'm just really concerned about the traffic there mainly and what it's going to do to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak publicly? Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Michelle Yon. I live at 103 Laughing Gul Lane. I don't wanna get too in detail because I think my primary concern, I'm not trying to speak for all the residents, is the unknown. I know that's already been stated. We don't have enough information. The devil's in the details. I think what we're all asking for is slow down a little bit. Let us have some more information. I am the resident that lives at the corner of Crooked River Road and Laughing Gul. There are three speed bumps currently, or humps, on our road before you get to the nursing home facility. I have been in law enforcement for 33 years. I'd be happy to take some video for you to show you the, that those are not effective. We have speeders all day and all night up and down the road. I know there's a speed limit there, but it's not abided by. Again, I can't speak to what I don't know. I just know that that is my biggest concern also. You know, well, because we do have such a cohesive, wonderful community in St. James Bay right now, and I'm not saying that couldn't continue, but we don't see law enforcement. We don't see things like that because we don't have any issues. Has, have we thought about all those things? Will there be a need for more first responders, more paramedics? Just things like that, that I don't know that we know all the answers to. So if we could just slow down, maybe get some more information. Again, you may get buy-in, you may not. But I just don't think, right now, we have enough information. And I just ask you for that consideration today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to publicly comment in the room? Please state your name for the record, sir. You have three minutes.
Louis Capola. I live in St. James Golf Course. My only concern is, as a homeowner, we just bought in there less than a year ago. And the community was the draw. Custom-built homes, small community, that's it. My biggest, the other thing is, my biggest concern is you have somebody who isn't a Franklin County resident. And John does not live in Franklin County.
Correct. You're not, you're not a resident here with us.
You're an investor, and it's about-
Please address the board.
It's about money, and it's about investments. I get, looking out for his business, getting workforce housing. I don't believe anybody that's gonna work at that golf course can afford apartments. Definitely not the houses there. I did work there for a couple of days. I know how much they pay. It's not a big draw. The employment is not there. I just wanna tell you, we're concerned. It changes the whole neighborhood. It changes the outlook of the future for our investments in our homes. And I won't be staying if that goes through, so I'm opposing it for sure.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment publicly in the room before we go to our attendees on Zoom? All right. Mr. Brown, can you check on Zoom, please?
I will. You do have a couple of participants that'd like to speak, address the board on this, sir. And I'll start off with phone number, area code 850-274-1549. I ask you to unmute your phone. And, okay. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to address the board of county commissioners. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Debbie Jordan calling to also ask, I neither support nor oppose Mr. John's, John Green's proposal, but my important consideration that the commission has a responsibility to make sure that they can provide proper fire service for this new development, should it happen. I think we're in trouble. And I think that when that, when we have more homes here, a plan needs to be put in place. I'm gonna keep it short and sweet this morning, but I think that's something that definitely needs to be concerned, considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jim Waddell has his hand raised, Mr. Chairman, so I will. Mr. Waddell, once you unmute, please state your name for the record and address the board of county commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Waddell, Inovia Consulting Group, 2015 Centerpoint Boulevard, Tallahassee, Florida. Engineer for Mr. Green on this application, double points. The PUD, draft PUD ordinance and supporting documentation, as I understand, it's been available for public view and comment for quite a while now. And I would agree that the exhibit on the board is a little ambiguous, but there, but there is considerable amount of additional detail that's available for viewing. With regard to stormwater, we've increased the wetland buffer setback by 100%, providing 100 feet versus a standard 50 feet, in addition to illustrating where proposed stormwater management facilities would go. City of Carabel has given us written confirmation that water and sewer would be, capacity would be available. And along with that goes fire protection. With regard to the traffic, I heard a comment about the traffic. We used our standard methodology for computing what the traffic impacts would be on the Crooked River Road and DOT intersection. And in terms of level of service, the additional trips that are proposed that would be generated by this development doesn't move the needle. And it still remains at a level of service of A. So, those are just a couple of comments that come to mind based on the, a few of the comments that I heard from the floor. As always, I would be happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have. And I may have to, you know, dig through some documentation in order to answer it. But if you give me that opportunity, I would be happy to assist in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. I will say this, I didn't, didn't know earlier, and Mr. Green, I wasn't trying to do anything procedurally wrong, that this was actually during the public comments period, so I don't, I don't think we're procedurally can ask any questions of Mr. Waddell right now. We're still taking public comments. So if Mr. Waddell should've spoke earlier, I'm sorry that we missed him. Is anybody else, sir?
No, that's it. Unlined for right now, sir.
All right. So before we go to the Commissioners, do you want to ask comments from Mr. Waddell? Commissioners, are you good? Again, I didn't try to skip him earlier. I know there was something to be skipped.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Waddell's comfortable, since it seems like he may be, you know, should've been first, I think if anybody has questions for him, I think it should be fair for them to ask a question pertaining, since they're looking for more information.
Absolutely. I mean, he's identified, Mr. Waddell is the agent and the engineer for the developer, and it's perfectly fair for him to receive questions from the public.
So we'll do that this time. I just wanna make sure we didn't procedurally do anything wrong. I'm not trying to-
We're done with public comments, closed, so.
Yes. Make sure you state your name, please.
And Mr. Waddell, I'm sorry, ma'am. Mr. Waddell, will you please unmute so you can respond to the questions as they are presented to you, sir?
Sure.
Michelle Yon again. I just had, since Mr. Waddell just said there's a lot of information, I don't know if he can tell me or somebody from the commission, because I did go back, I tried to do my due diligence, and I went back to, I think, June or July. I cannot find the information from the notes, from the agenda meeting. So if we can just, somebody can tell us where we can find that so we can get the information. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, do you know which meeting that was? That we first initially did the transmittal?
No, sorry. January 18th.
January 18th.
Of this year was the transmittal period.
And there was, and there was also the planning and zoning meeting that occurred prior to that.
The week before.
The week before December. I'll have to go back and check on when we had, when they went P and Z.
This, we found this attachment, sir, or board, I'm sorry, but that's the only attachment that we could find in there.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions they would like to ask at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I can. Hey, Mr. Waddell, this is Michael Schuler. Good morning. How are you?
Hey, good morning, Michael.
Hey, good morning, sir. I'm the county attorney. I don't participate frankly in the planning and zoning meetings, but since we're in this public hearing, I do participate in that. I was curious, when you were presenting the data and analysis to Mr. Carrington, did you go through the various elements of the comprehensive plan to ensure that the developer's application satisfied the requirements of the county's comprehensive plan?
To the best of our knowledge, my knowledge and belief, yes, we did. We even changed, made some changes to it based on the allowable density afforded by the change of use to be more reflective of the specific development plan that's being proposed. We also went through the, this application as it went through the clearinghouse of review at the state level. We had a couple of, couple of agency comments that I think have been, were adequately addressed. Honestly, most of it was more on an advisory level rather than a regulatory change level. So I think, you know, the answer to your question is, yes, we did.
Okay. That was the general overview question. There's some specific items that I've heard from the public today concern, issues concerning stormwater, the traffic, the parking issues. I know all of those are addressed in our comprehensive plan. So did you provide data and analysis to the county concerning those three items? Stormwater, traffic, and parking?
Traffic, yes. Parking, we referenced in the PUD ordinance, the parking requirement that's consistent with the code. There's an obligation on the part of the developer to meet that requirement. You know, we have, so there is sufficient parking for the individual, for the individual residences, as well as the multifamily component. And as I stated previously, we have done preliminary calculations and illustrated on the plans, provision of stormwater management facilities. And then in terms of the other environmental features that, you know, normally stormwater impacts, we've increased that buffer width by an additional 50 feet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a point of record concerning Ms. Yon?
Yon.
Yon's comment. I pulled up the January 18 minutes from our meeting, and it is on here. The transmittal hearing with the minutes are included in this. And I went to the website, the county website, to obtain that.
Yeah, no, no attachment, no applicant, no detail. It just says we're gonna have the hearing and that it was brought up, but there's like no information for the development, like what we-
Okay. I see what you're saying.
Yeah. The details.
I thought there was, but staying corrected.
Okay.
Can you put it on the screen if you're seeing you find it?
I'm looking for it. It's not on the, it's this.
Could we, please, just keep it at a minimum? I know we're trying to communicate, but let's stay civil. So I guess procedures were to the board, discussion from the board, is that correct?
Yes, if the board has, if the board has any additional questions for Mr. Waddell, now would be the time. And if not, it would be appropriate for board discussion. At some point, I'm going to want to have Mr. Carrington provide a, or give a supplement to his presentation as to his review of the data and analysis of the developer's application and his review of the comprehensive plan requirements and whether they do or do not meet those various elements. So maybe it would be appropriate to have Mr. Carrington address that for board discussion.
I think it would be, yes, sir. Mr. Carrington, please proceed.
Okay. We have a standard form that we ask everyone who has a proposed zoning or land use change to fill out. And these are things that are called out for in our comprehensive plan, asking them, you know, standard questions about, you know, soils, stormwater, facilities, endangered species, historic resources, all that sort of thing. Mr. Waddell filled out and provided that to the county. I thought this was included in y'all's agenda package. I thought this was included in y'all's agenda package back in January for the first public hearing, but I didn't check to make sure. But it's definitely, you know, available in our office, the advertisements, you know, included our phone number and contact information if someone had any questions. I'm not aware of anyone contacting our office for any additional information. But as Mr. Waddell said, you know, stormwater, we generally do not require a, well, we don't require a permit from the state for their stormwater prior to land use change or zoning change. We ask that they provide, you know, evidence that they have room to deal with it, and the provision that they had, they were increasing the setback from the wetlands from county standard 50 feet to 100 feet in this development. And that should provide plenty of room. They had indicated, you know, potential stormwater treatment areas that satisfied us that they would have adequate room to deal with their stormwater. They will have to have a permit for their, either a permit or an exemption before they record their subdivision plat and get approved, a building permit for their multifamily development. As far as, as traffic, Inovia Engineering did provide a traffic study that was for the extent of the development they are proposing. The, the county's land use standard for the mixed-use residential, I believe is 4.3 units an acre, and that was what DOT, that was DOT's concern. They said that this development, the traffic analysis that was sent in, did not address the potential for having 4.3 units an acre, and it was only based on the, you know, 1.5 units an acre that, you know, was proposed in the PUD. And so that was DOT's comment, you should have done the traffic analysis on 4.3 units an acre, which show, and, you know, DOT did not have the benefit of the PUD ordinance, which limits them to 1.5 units an acre. So I think, you know, that once we provide that to DOT, they should not have any objections. But that, that traffic analysis showed that this development at its full buildout would not increase the traffic above what it is currently, which is, you know, a level A, which is the lowest level for, for the state. You know, it's free-flowing traffic, and this should not, you know, cause it to increase But basically, they, they have addressed all the issues to my satisfaction that, you know, and the requirements of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Carrington, can I ask?
Oh, yes, sir, good, chairman.
Mr. Carrington, that, I want to make sure we're doing things right, sir. Mr. Carrington, the, the area where St. James Bay is at?
Yes, sir.
What, what year was that PUD first passed? Do you know? '04, '03?
2003.
Early 2000s.
Okay.
It was early something like that.
Right, but it was a planned development that allowed for what was there, additions later, that's all I'm asking.
A golf course, a certain number of residential units.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And it has a, a commercial component along Highway 98 that has never been developed.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody, not only here in the room, but everybody that might watch the meeting or is watching it or could watch it in the future, knows what we're talking about when we're talking about this PUD, that planned unit development that was designed many years before we got to where we are today. That was my one question. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Carrington, commissioners?
And you say everything meet the, meet our standards?
They meet the, the standards of, they meet the requirements of the Franklin County Conference of Plan, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just clarify something that Mr. Carrington said. Whenever the, the first transmittal hearing was advertised for a public hearing, does, does the advertisement contain a statement that the proposed ordinance is on file and available for review by the public in your office or at the clerk's office? I'm not sure where it was frankly placed back in January, whether it's in your office on file or on file at the clerk's office.
I don't know if it says those particular words, it's, I know it says for more information, contact, and it has our, our telephone number and contact information.
Okay, all right, that's fine, thank you.
I don't know, just to clarify for advertising, I just want to make clear, we, we put on the agenda the same exact ad that runs in the newspaper. That's, that's, that's how we do it normally, it's, you know, to make sure they're the same thing. And if you want more information, you contact the planning office or the zoning office, depends on the item.
Okay.
And I, I verified that that ad was, as part of the, the actual agenda for January 8th, just pulled it up.
Okay. Any more questions for Mr. Carrington? Mark, thank you. So now procedure, I guess, to where it's a commission comment?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, since Mr. Carrington has essentially given testimony, they have a chance, if they want to ask him any questions, they can ask questions of Mr. Carrington as well, as can Mr. Green.
Does anyone have any questions for county planner Mark Carrington at this time from the audience? Please proceed. Hold on, hold on, do you have something coming? Please state your name for the record.
Dennis Roth, Livon Royal Turn. What's the procedure for a zoning change? Is there signage, does it have to be signage? You said newspaper, what, what newspaper are you talking about?
The procedure is, we send notices, we publish a notice in the newspaper.
What newspaper?
The local newspaper, Apalachicola Times.
Thank you.
We send notices to the property owner, and we should send notices to the adjacent property owners.
Anybody got a notice?
No. Sir, please, you're asking-
Anybody got a-
-question for Mr. Carrington, can you please just stay on topic?
Okay, so that, that didn't happen, correct, or no?
Uh-
But you're saying it should have been done, correct?
That's the county standard procedure.
Okay.
I think the, the minimum requirement is sending notice to the property owner, but the county generally sends notices to all the adjacent property owners.
Okay. Do you know who the property owner is?
I would have to go back and look. I know Mr., Mr. Green, I believe, has a-
Contracted by-
Contract with someone else.
So, so there's no procedure where there has to be a sign out on the property notifying there's a potential zoning change? Is that correct?
The county has recently adopted one where we post on site.
Recently, when?
Well, before, before this happened. But I couldn't, I'd have to go back and check whether we actually did it for this one.
You did not, but just so we're clear that you didn't follow the correct procedure. You're the attorney, right? Are you the attorney?
Yes.
That's your role, in your role? You didn't have, I didn't, we couldn't hear who you were.
He's the county planner.
The county planner, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
It's-
Please state your name for the record.
Chester Butler.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it seems like we've established two things today. Number one, it appears that the procedure was not followed, and number two, the result of that, and the other, what appears to be an error on the part of someone, that the documents were not attached so that somebody could easily find them. So I would repeat what I said earlier, we need to slow the boat down and give the property owners who have substantial investments a chance to review those items, because what we have at this point, if I can quote a movie, is a failure to communicate. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I, I would like to say, sir, if you're okay with it.
Sure.
I think it's been mentioned here today that there are failures. None of us in this room can confirm or deny any of those such failures. No, nobody in this county has tried to keep any information from anybody concerning the planned unit development that you currently have property in. It's not R1 residential, it is a planned unit development and has been such since 2003.
I understand.
Those are the factual things we've actually discussed here today.
Right. But what I was talking about is what Commissioner Ward had said, I can't find it. Was that correct?
Yeah, but we're, we don't traditionally find things on the spur of the moment just because somebody, I mean, who can be ready for all that?
Right, I understand.
I mean, that's very difficult.
Okay. But that doesn't change the position that if a lot of people cannot determine the specifications that the developer has already provided, and that a county official has already reviewed, we'd like to look at that too. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing.
No, sir, it's not.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Sorry, Commissioner Ward, I wasn't trying to cut you off.
It's fine, I'll just, I'll speak after they speak.
Uh, my name is Paul Mitchell. Sir, I'm, I'm a registered professional engineer here in Florida. I've got many, many years' experience, in fact, I have a retirement from the Department of Transportation. So having the ability to look at your, at the proposed traffic study, to see if it, it meets some of the things that I would like to see that it meets, would be very important to me. But, you know, I, I spent hours looking for this through your county records, and I couldn't find it anywhere online. And there is no, I, I drive that community every day, and there is nothing posted on the community, there's nothing posted in the, in the, in the clubhouse there, there's nothing that I could find, nothing in the association office about this, nothing. So I'm going to echo what, what Mr. Butler said. I feel that, that there's been a, a real dearth of information provided, the, the applicant certainly hasn't given it to us, and, and there's been opportunities for him to do that. You know, I, I serve on the architectural review board for that community, and this has never once been a subject at the architectural review board. So I, I think that, that before you, you folks actually vote and approve this, I think that it would be appropriate for the owners that it's going to affect to have the opportunity to look at these documents, spend some time, ask questions of your planner, and find out, you know, what, what really is the effect on our community and our investments. Thank you.
Sir, can I?
Just, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Sir, Commissioner Lockley wants to ask a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
You said you looked them up and you didn't find them?
I, I went through both the planning board and I went through the commission minutes, and I could, I could find a mention of it, but I couldn't find, this is the only, well, without that, that pop-up on it, that's the only document that I could ever find. There's no specificity in that document, there's nothing from an engineer's perspective that tells me what's going to go there. Where are those places going to be, what effect is it going to have on our community? You know, I mean, there's a, there's a myriad of things that, as an engineer, that I would want to get answers on.
But can I ask you a question? Did you contact any of us there after you found that out?
Uh, no, I, it, it wasn't until very recently that I even saw that this was going to be as a second item on this agenda, and I, I've spent hours on the internet looking for it, and it's, it's just not there.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other questions, sir?
Uh, I'll, I'll, let me make this statement first. I don't know how the board's going to decide on this today, I'm just one of the members of the board, okay? So there's not a slant either way in my mind from this. But I do echo what Commissioner Lockley's saying, and you've said it repeatedly, that you spent hours looking.
Yes, sir.
None of that spending time led you to think it might be good to contact county to ask about it?
That was after hours, they would have been closed?
Okay. I just, that's, that was my one question.
Okay.
Just because you said it repeatedly, and that's some reason I-
Yes, sir.
It's all good. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say something for the record concerning Mr. Butler, and Mr. Carrington can correct me on this, in the minutes, that's what I saw. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Carrington, technically, all the zoning changes and land use changes items we have presented today, they don't, or they're not required per law to make a sketch plat or present a sketch plat of what it's going to look like, is that correct? So all the documentation and maps that they're speaking of, besides this one here, technically, from the transmittal perspective, this perspective, they, they don't have to show anything on that, do they?
Well, a, a sketch plat is a specific process in, in plating, but no, they don't have to show that. There is, you know, documentation, Mr. Green, Mr. Waddell provided, you know, a sort of a conceptual site plan of the development, which is available, you know, in our office. They also provided, you know, other documentation, including the, the traffic study, information from the state on historic resources, and several other items, including, you know, our checklist of what has to be provided according to the conference of plan.
Okay, so, so for the record, they did their due diligence in part, and, and again, finding stuff online is not easy on the spot, but it was, as long as it's available in the office, it doesn't have to be online in the office legally, I think, but nobody, I mean, I'm guessing they could come to you and ask you or call you about getting this documentation so they could see it.
Yes.
That's all I needed to know, thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Carrington? Anything else, procedure as to do before commissioner comments?
Um, I've only recently started going to the planning and zoning meetings because the boards merged, Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning merged, but is it not the custom of planning and zoning, it advertises its agendas in the newspaper and announces the date, time, and place of the meeting?
Yes.
I know the P and Z used to not advertise in the paper, the Board of Adjustment advertised in the paper. I can't swear to you, I know the Board of Adjustment items still get advertised in the paper.
Okay.
But I don't, what I couldn't swear to you is whether the planning and zoning items that are heard at that same meeting are also advertised. They're, they're not.
Okay.
I think only the items that require the former Board of Adjustment, sort of items like variances, are advertised.
Okay. And typically on these land use and zoning changes, you, you prepare the, the newspaper advertisements for those land use and zoning change requests?
Yes, sir.
And did you prepare the, the land use and zoning changes for this?
I prepared this one, yes, sir.
And that was published for the January 2022 meeting?
A, a previous advertisement was published, yes, prior to the January 18th, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And did that advertisement, I think you said, had some notation that additional information was available at your office?
We always include, you know, our contact information for more information.
Okay. And same thing with the hearing that we're having today? You prepared the advertisement for that?
Yes, sir.
It was duly advertised and had the same information, that additional information was available in your office?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Or discussion?
Yeah, you know, it's hard for a change. A lot of people don't want change. But if you get all this, man gonna get developed. Whether it be by single people or by developers. Affordable? All day. They need, that's where they need to take out the dictionary and go. Ain't nothing affordable no more. I mean, it was a time. Hundred thousand, them days come. More like a hundred thousand for a lot. Lot of places. And people, when they've been used to being in an era so long not developed, they get used to it. I done the same thing, but it wasn't none of mine. So when my house start popping up, my development start popping up, nothing I could say. Because I didn't own it. And if people follow the guideline and do everything what Franklin County said do, I took a oath. I got to go by what the law, and that's, the man say they done everything they supposed to do. So with that, I'm gonna vote to pass. If man propose.
Is that a motion to approve, Commissioner Lockley?
Motion to.
Okay, we have motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion before we vote, commissioners?
No, we have, you know, two separate ordinances.
Yes, yes, we're aware of that. We're just voting on the first one for the land use change. Correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, three oh. Please proceed, sir.
Okay. We have a zoning change and approval of the St. James West Plan Unit Development Ordinance. This would be the enact, basically the zoning that would allow them to do what they have proposed. Property is currently zoned public facilities, which is leftover from the old Anawaki school there. This was part of the Anawaki property. And it was owned public facilities back at that time because that was the only thing that a school fell under, even though it was privately owned property. We just haven't changed it since then because no one had proposed what they wanted. And this is the proposal to change it to St. James West Plan Unit Development and approve the zoning category.
Okay.
Public comment?
All right, this time we will take public comment. Anyone wishing to comment on this publicly may do so now. Okay, where's Mr. Maroney?
I'm right here.
Michael, see if there's anybody online that wants to comment on, to make public comment, is what we're doing.
Now, Jim, Mr. Waddell, you have your hand raised.
We're not there yet, we're public comment.
For public comment, or did you?
I can wait for whenever you tell me the appropriate time. I just wanted to be in the queue.
Okay.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Well, besides Mr. Waddell, sir, there are no other raised hands to comment on this matter.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, just for the. Correct, Mr. Maroney has handed me the actual advertisement. Today's public hearing, published on March 3rd, 2022, and embedded within that is the statement that we were discussing earlier. It says, "More information can be obtained and the proposed ordinance may be inspected by the public at Franklin County Planning Department, 34 Forbes Street, Suite 1, Appalachia Cola, Florida, 32320. It gives the telephone number, 850-653-9783." Sorry that it was so inarticulately presented earlier, but I wasn't frankly aware we were going to have a notice issue. But I did want to make sure on the record that the ad clearly states that more information can be obtained and the proposed ordinance inspected, as I've just read off to the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So we made it past public comments, sir. Is there anything you wish to say? All right. Michael asked Mr. Waddell if he wished to say anything, since he did already raise his hand.
Mr. Waddell, you may unmute, oh, be unmuted, sir.
Sure. Thank you, Michael, commissioners. Just to the point, to the earlier point in question, I think by the commissioner on sketch plat, I would point out that Section 5 of the draft ordinance essentially approves the sketch plat level application for the residential areas. It'd be Section 5 of the ordinance and the companion exhibits, or Exhibit B, that illustrate that. Thank you.
Okay.
And if there's no discussion among the board members, I think you're in a procedural position to make a decision, change the zoning and adopt the PUD.
Okay. So it's a motion by Commissioner Lockley to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward? Any discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, three oh. All right, thank you, Mr. Currenton.
Thank you.
Ms. Griffin, before we get to your report, can we recess for five minutes, please?
Thank you.
This is Penny Fisk inviting you to see me in the Off-Broadway smash hit Greater Tuna, April 8 through the 10th, at the Chapman Theater in Appalachia Cola. And there are over 20 characters in the show, and they're all being played by two men. And they play the lady parts, too, if you can believe it. Tickets are $25 each, and you can get them online at coastaltheater.com or at the door. Greater Tuna, April 8 through the 10th, at the Chapman Theater in Appalachia Cola. You'll have a hilariously good time at Jerry Hurley's Sweet Tea at the B&amp;B. The show will make its world premiere March 25th through the 27th at the Chapman Theater in Appalachia Cola. You'll meet a cast of characters including the family matriarch Cleopatra, grandson Beau, Uncle Bertie, and others, including a few ladies of the night, Trixie, Mona, and Velvet. Sweet Tea at the B&amp;B, March 25th through the 27th. The show is directed by Judy Loftus. Get tickets online at panhandleplayers.com or at the door. This event is funded in part by the Franklin County TDC.
Hi, I'm Cara Landis. I'm a professional Realtor in love with St. George Island. When my husband and I and our dogs moved here in 2002, it was the beginning of an adventure that has never grown old in a community that is amazing. If you're thinking about moving to St. George Island or investing in our world-class real estate, then this community will be as important to you as the sand and surf.
Cara to me is much more than an agent. She's become a friend. Since we bought the house, we've needed work done. And she knows everybody there is that can help us with that.
One of the key elements for the historical growth and value of St. George Island real estate is the fact that it's a great place to vacation and to live. The beauty of the Gulf of Mexico with its white sand beaches and blue sky has always been a magnet for me. It was love at first sight. As your Realtor, I can help educate you on the various aspects of buying and owning coastal properties. From taxes to coastal setback lines to where to find the best oysters, it's all part of being your Realtor.
Too often our friends tell us of it being a hardship to buy a house and the agent was gone as soon as the closing. We've had quite the opposite experience with Cara.
If you're looking to buy or sell real estate on St. George Island, I'd love to work with you. Please call or text me at 850-653-7753.
... and twice the laughs in the month of March at Appalachia's Living Dead, a downtown ghost tour. You'll have two weekends to see this tour in the month of March on the 4th and 5th and 18th and 19th. All tours start at 7:30 PM in front of the Chamber of Commerce in Appalachia Cola. You'll meet ghosts from the Forgotten Coast Pass who will tell you creepy and funny ghost stories, as well as local legends, including the legend of Tate's Hell. Tickets are $10 and $5 for kids 12 and under. Be there if you dare, March 4th and 5th and 18th and 19th for Appalachia's Living Dead.
In regards to our swing bed program, in four critical access hospitals, we have these special designations called swing bed, which are inpatient rehab types of programs. We have a nice new physical therapy room with lots of new equipment, as well as occupational therapy. We'd love for you to take advantage of if you've had something like a joint replacement or some sort of significant hospitalization where you've been weakened. You have a family member, for example, who's had those situations in a different area, and you'd like them close to you so you can visit them or check in on them regularly. We could always offer those services to your family members so you can be close to provide them with emotional and social support.
Board of County Commissioners now back in session for the report that's next from Ms. Erin Griffin, our fiscal manager and grants coordinator. Please proceed.
Item A on my report, the preliminary design and engineering concepts for the countywide dune restoration project and the St. George Island stormwater improvements projects are nearly complete once approval is received from state agencies. Once the current design permitting phase is finished by MRD and DUBREY engineers, it will take about one month to gather the required documentation and put together the grant applications. It will take around 90 days after submission for the construction grant applications to be approved. Langton and Associates has submitted task orders for pre-award grant writing services for time and materials not to exceed a total of $7,020 for each grant application. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached task orders from Langton and Associates for pre-award grant writing services for the countywide dune restoration project and the St. George Island stormwater drainage improvements project.
A motion by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward? Any discussion? I would like to ask a question, Erin. So that would put our timeline basically around September when they potentially start? Because from there, you still have to award it and all that stuff, right?
That's correct, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so most likely September would be the earliest that we could actually get the construction grant funding. And one thing that we are still waiting on is formal approval to use the DOT retention ponds.
Right, okay.
So depending on how long that takes.
And also the potentiality of having to create another pond, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On the island, okay. All right, that was my only discussion. Any other discussion, commissioners, before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries for us.
The next item is Item B. The Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, is a competitive federal grant program available to eligible small cities and small counties. The program concentrates on activities which benefit low and moderate income families. Examples of CDBG-funded projects include water and sewer improvements, street and sidewalk improvements, economic development activities which create jobs for those with low and moderate income, downtown revitalization, park facilities and community centers, and drainage stormwater improvements. Debbie Belcher was the county's previous CDBG program grant administrator and consultant, and since her retirement last year and lack of funding opportunities with the CDBG program, the county has not pursued contracting with a new administrator. To be ready for the next funding cycle, I asked Ms. Belcher, who is familiar with the county's needs and expectations and complex federal regulations, what she would charge to assist the county on an as-needed basis to develop the RFQ for a replacement CDBG. CDBG administrator consultant. Ms. Belcher has retired from CDBG administration, but will help the county as needed with small assignments as a consultant at a rate of $80 per hour. Board action to approve and authorize the development and advertisement of an RFQ for CDBG Small Cities Program Administration and authorize Debbie Belcher to assist as needed.
I have a question, Erin. Actually, a couple of them. And maybe it's something she'll have to answer. When you start to do CDBG, can you only do one at a time?
That's something that Debbie will have to answer for.
Does it depend on the thing? That's one concern I have. Because I know they have a diversity of what you can apply to use the dollars for. And the other one would be when we go to write this RFQ that's going to help us to put it out so somebody can actually bid to be our... Okay. That's why I was making sure. All right? Sir?
Yeah, I moved.
Okay. I didn't hear Commissioner Bolt, I'm sorry. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Lockley. Thank you, Commissioner Lockley, for helping keep my direction. We've been here for a couple of minutes. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Next item C. At the last meeting, bids were open for the second time for the widening and resurfacing of C-30A. The rebid included the original distance and an alternate bid solicitation A with the reduced scope in hopes of bids falling within funding constraints. The total grant funds available for construction was $3,462,662. Robertson Roberts was the lowest responsible bidder at $3,445,863.82 for alternate bid A for 3.466 miles of CR-30A starting at 13 Mile Road and running eastwards towards Highway 98. The project will include resurfacing, restriping, guard rail, shoulder stabilization, culvert, extension and five-foot paved shoulders. The Florida Department of Transportation has sent a supplemental grant agreement to formally modify the scope of work. And I have two action items, and I'd like to do each one separately, if that's okay? Okay? The first one is board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the attached resolution of authorization and supplemental grant agreement for the modified project scope.
Have a motion by Commissioner Lockley to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ward, also for approval. Any discussion?
Y'all got a mokey guard rail on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That'll be good. That'll be good. Any more discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
I meant Commissioner Parrish. I didn't mean to call this Mokey.
Next item is board action to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the notice of award for alternate A of bids received on March 1st, 2021 in the amount of $3,445,863.82 to Robertson Roberts Incorporated.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, four o.
Okay, and we've already covered item D. Next item's going to be E on my report. Bid specifications for the next phase of the CR-370 Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path are nearly complete. This phase will run from the Marina to East Harbor Circle and consists of five-foot-wide bicycle lane shoulders on each side of Alligator Drive from the Marina to the S-curve and a separate 10-foot-wide path from the S-curve to East Harbor Circle. It is anticipated that bid opening will be in May. Board action to authorize advertisement for bids for the next phase of the CR-370 Alligator Drive Multi-Use Path.
So move.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Bolt, second by Commissioner Lockley. Any discussion before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, four o.
Next item F. The NG 911 Federal Grant Program's period of performance ends on March 31st, 2022. The DataMark vendor invoices will not be available until the week of March 21st through March 25th. Board action to authorize two manual checks payable to DataMark for the NG 911 projects at the Sheriff's Department once an invoice is received and approved for payment by the E-911 Coordinator and Clerk's Finance Office. Board action to authorize the two manual checks.
Will move.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Lockley?
Second.
Second by both, Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Bolt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous.
Okay, next item G. The annual tri-county rural E-911 maintenance grant application is due by March 31st. This grant will pay 100% of the annual maintenance expenses of $34,748 for the E-911 system. The E-911 Coordinator, Renee Brandon, is working to complete the grant application by the March 31st deadline, and a blank copy of which is attached. Board action to approve and authorize the chairman's signature on the E-911 maintenance grant application once it is complete. So move.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Ward?
Second with a comment.
Second by Commissioner Lockley. Please proceed, Commissioner.
Oh. Do the lawyer have to look over this? You have to look over this?
Yes, sir. They typically send those over to me to look at.
Okay. I second it with Michael, with the lawyer approval.
So you wanted to add that language, sir, in the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll amend my motion to reflect Commissioner Lockley's statements.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion before we vote? With the motions amended, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's unanimous, four o.
Next item H is for board information only. Upon conclusion of the legislative session, the county understands that both the FERDAP grant program and the historic preservation grant program will be fully funded by the Florida Legislature pending adoption of the state's budget. The FERDAP program applications included $200,000 for improvements to Bruman Park and $200,000 for SGI playground improvements at Lighthouse Park. The historic preservation program applications included a county application for $156,056 for the Caribou Beach Wayside Park repairs and a tourist development council application for $188,500 for marine heritage museum exhibits at Buddy Ward Park. The tourist development council wholeheartedly supported both of the historic preservation projects and offered assistance with the projects if grant funds were unavailable. The Caribou Beach Wayside Park repairs, design and bid specifications for construction are ready at this time, and a bid solicitation for construction will go out as soon as the grant agreement is received.
So all those were potential... Are they going to be funded by the state of Florida?
Sensitively approved.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So today, well, at 10 o'clock this morning, FAC had their update of all legislative stuff, but here we are. I'm going to try and find a recording of that presentation that FAC made and send it to each of you so you can review it for yourselves, okay? So if you want to get it, you'll know what it is and where it's coming from.
Right. Okay.
Good job, Miss.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Yep. Anything else, Ms. Erin?
Yep. Next item I.
You didn't even want to slow down, did you? We've been here for a while, Erin. It's okay, you can take 30 seconds.
I told you she's president-elect for years.
Go ahead, please proceed.
EMS Director Richard Lewis and county staff have received some inquiries from first responders in regards to funding assistance for the purchase of automated CPR life-saving equipment. The ambulances are equipped with the Lucas Life Saving Devices, and this device, in the hands of first responders, can further improve survival rates. The funding cycle has not yet opened for the 2022 FEMA Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Program, but volunteer fire departments, if interested, can take steps now to be ready by gathering supporting documentation of which Louis, the EMS director, has already compiled for this piece of equipment. And let's see. And go ahead and sign up for the FEMA Grants Portal at go.fema.gov. Franklin County will send an announcement of funding opportunity to all of the fire departments once the application window opens, and county staff slash EMS staff will be available to assist with the application process if needed.
Good. That's a good thing. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Griffin while we're at this part of the meeting?
I do, I just want to make a comment, Chairman. Thank you for working so diligently on these grants. I know it's not an easy task. You and Ms. Pat over there. So I would like to ask, though, I know you sent me the preliminary ideas for Bruman Park. Could you send those to me again? I couldn't find them.
Oh, yes.
If you don't mind, I appreciate that. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Now, if we could just get people to stop vandalizing Bruman Park, I think we'd be all right.
That would be good, wouldn't it?
That would be really good.
And we're also... I don't know how many lights it was today that Mr. Davis was talking about replacing. But getting some of those lights replaced might help.
It was actually a lot. It ended up being 28 lights between the two parks, and they run about $545 apiece. So there was 12 needed at DW Wilson Park. And the balance were at Bruman Park, at least 16. And even that, you know, that's not going to do 100%. I think we're still going to be a few shy, but that's going to address those that, you know, had multiple lights out per pole.
Right. Well, good.
And we are looking for funding to actually do, you know, a brand-new lighting project, actually for both of those parks, because we would like to have, you know, modern sports lighting with wind-gradeed poles as well. So that's something that we do have our feelers out looking for funding for lighting systems for both DW Wilson and Bruman.
And the newer lights are also more efficient.
Yes.
Way more efficient.
Think they'll be ready for the DAV?
Well, these lights now will be.
He sent us a text.
Oh, did he?
Chairman, DAV, he wanted to make a correction that...
April 1st and 2nd.
You got it? Okay. Good. Yes. Commissioner Ward, you know what I'm going to look into? And I'll try and have it ready for the next meeting. A proposal for the same type of security system that we have at Abercrombie, you know, the boat ramp out there? Talk to Font about his budget and look at a system like that for Bruman and see. Because if we have access to those light poles that are ours, correct?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, I'll speak to you after the meeting about that. I don't want to disclose certain things on the record.
Okay, cool.
So I'll talk to you after the meeting about that.
That works.
All right. Thank you, Erin. And I think we've done every other report, correct?
Yes, sir.
So now we're at commissioners' comments?
Yep.
Any commissioners have any comments? Anything you wish to say?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make a note that as we see this influx of springtime and summertime, folks coming to the beaches, particularly at Alligator Point, a repeat of the same scenario of overcrowding, over-parking, dysfunctional parking continues to be there. And I'd like to revisit the appropriateness of funding for some booting equipment for the sheriff to use to just make the consequences a little bit more appropriate. And if we can put that on the agenda item for the next time, I'd like to talk about it.
Okay. Mr. Nolan's writing down now. Michael, I know you're writing. I need to give you this iPad back. That was the trade we made. For me to get a phone is to surrender the iPad. So I need to give that back to you. I finally got everything switched over, and it's all good. But I do want to mention a couple of things. I've had several under-commissioner comments. I've had several residents to me... Anybody that knows me knows I'm a pretty captive audience there at the auto parts. People know where to find me most days, unless I'm doing county business, about the closure of the bay and FWC and all the things that are going on. And I know we've had some discussion amongst ourselves about doing some kind of roundtable discussion with other agencies. I'll say this. I know that from talking yesterday with some of the officers from FWC that are involved in it and everything that's going on with the bay and the monitoring, I believe that they told me they've already spoken with Commissioner Bolt. I believe they've already spoken with Commissioner Parrish, and I think they're trying to make time to speak to the other two. I was honestly good with the responses I got from them because I asked them questions that people that have been in the industry wanted to know about. How are they doing the monitoring? Are they taking into account that you can't just GPS-locate a coordinate and start tonguing, and you're always going to pull up oysters? It does have something to do with the way the boats land. There is concerns about, you know, when the oysters do start to come back, if nothing's cultivated or turned over, that it's somehow not going to do what it's supposed to do. They assured me that we talked for about 45 minutes, that they were looking at those issues, they were aware of those issues. That was part of their concern. So looking at the roundtable thing, I'm not trying to say it's a bad idea, but I'm saying that's what the APSY group is about, that Commissioner Bolt serves on behalf of us for, is to get all those entities together to talk about it. So I'm good personally with getting updates from Commissioner Bolt on how those meetings are going. With this going on, and just know, Commissioner Lockley, Commissioner Ward, they did express they still want to meet with you guys as well.
Yes.
I just wanted the public to know that we're not just not here for, we're not doing nothing. There is conversation going on to the best of our ability.
If I could add that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bolt, the more I hear, the more I talk... I think we should change the order of what you first proposed. I think the meetings, the one-on-one meetings, I think at that point, FWC comes and makes a public presentation to the county commission, to the public. And then, based on that discussion, then decide if we still need to do the roundtable. I think that'll work out better, Commissioner Bolt, based on, you know, listening to everybody else and FWC and some of the complaints that we're getting.
To complement all of that, the outcome that I have in mind with FWC is ultimately a progress report to the public on a regular basis, written in layman language relative to how the bay is doing, how the growth is coming along, and when potential openings may be. And I see that as maybe every six-month publication in our paper and other areas.
I will add something I forgot to mention. So I did ask them yesterday, when I was talking to them, the three gentlemen I was talking to, about the potentiality. And they said that they weren't opposed to it. They were looking to see about how they can get it done, about the opportunity for those in the public, those that grew up in this industry, that want to go out one-on-one with them and go see what's actually in the bay. That they said that they would work out that kind of field trip, if you will, for those that want to see it. So more coming on that. There was something I kind of sprung on them yesterday when I was talking to them, but just want to make sure the public's aware.
I'd go with them if they let me eat what I catch.
There you go. There you go. Any other commissioner comments before we adjourn today?
Are we going to have a one-on-one with FDOT folks as well?
I was going to bring it up.
We're supposed to at some point, right?
Yes, I'm just waiting for them to give me some dates. Yes, sir, you sure will.
Well, I thought they gave you dates, and I've sent you back dates.
Oh, I'm sorry. They gave me the dates, and I gave them a couple. They haven't confirmed either one yet. And I'm sorry, you're right. I'm getting so old.
Just got a date straight now.
Yeah.
All right, anything else, commissioners?